I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Silver Consolidated School District. It's Monday, May 21st, and the time is 6:03 PM. Welcome, everyone. As a point of order, if you would like to speak during public comment periods, there will be two comment periods during the agenda. The first being a limited public comment, and then later in the meeting there is open public comment. There are requests for public comment. It should be up on the table there. If you want to speak to the board, please turn in one of those. Fill out one of these forms and turn it in to Mrs. Hernandez. Again, welcome, members of the administration, members of the board, members of the public. Thank you for being here. Mrs. Hernandez, would you conduct a roll call?
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Here.
Mr. John?
Here.
Dr. Diaz?
Here.
And Mr. Flores?
Here. Thank you. I'd like everybody to stand with me, and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance and the New Mexico Flag Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
First on our agenda this evening is an Excellence and Student Achievement Award presentation. And this award is presented by the New Mexico School Boards Association in cooperation with the Silver Consolidated Board of Education in recognition of the outstanding role played in improving student achievement. And we have a staff member in our district that was selected to receive this award this year, and I would like to introduce her and have her come up to the front so we can present the award to her, and it's Ms. Kelly Lamb. Ms. Lamb, please stand up. Mrs. Lamb has been an employee of the district at Stout Elementary for 14 years and has been an instrumental leader and a mentor to many teachers and an outstanding teacher to many students, so we would like to award this to you this evening. It was meant to be a surprise, so I'll take the point.
Okay, so that I did not know. Therefore, the award was picnic day at school.
You can sit down this way. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. I don't think so.
Would you like a box? You can have the box.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations again, and thank you for all your work and service to the Silver Consolidated School District. Next on our agenda is the review and approval of minutes. We have minutes from the April 16th, 2018 work session and April 16th regular meeting. Those minutes were distributed to the board. Does anybody have any corrections to those?
I have just a typo under number four, Board of Education, a finance subcommittee report. Under Mrs. Montenegro indicated that it should be projected. It says project, cash reserve, but projected. So on item four, letter A, just switch that project to projected, and that's all I have.
Any other corrections? I'll entertain a motion to approve our minutes from the April 16th, 2018 work session and regular meeting with the noted corrections.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes to approve the corrected minutes. Next on our agenda this evening is a consideration and approval of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda as presented.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
The motion to approve as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving our agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes to approve our agenda. Next on our agenda this evening is information slash presentations. These are non-action items. And the first presentation that we have tonight is a phone presentation by Mr. Ben Potts, Director of Technology. Welcome, Mr. Potts.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Brown, members of the board, community members. Mr. Brown had asked me, and I've asked him a couple times, to talk about the phone system in the district because we saw it as a security issue. And we first came to this board when I was hired in 2013 to talk about the phone system and some issues we saw with it at that time. And of course, it was a different board, different administration, and so we wanted to come back, especially with all the recent events, to kind of give you some information. So in your board packet, you have this handout that goes over some of the issues. The system was purchased in 2006 by the district, so it's a little over 10 years old right now. And when the district purchased it, for some reason after they purchased it, they never purchased any upgrades or software or support for it. So it's on the original feature set from 2006. So imagine running your computer or your business on software that's 12 years old. That would be Windows Vista, which came out the same year. I don't know how many businesses and towns still use Windows Vista, but that's what our phone system is essentially running on. And in 2013, right before I was hired, Sixth Street Elementary's phone system actually went down, and they had to replace it with parts, and it was down for multiple days. And when the system went down, I inherited, they decided to sign a three-year contract that I got to inherit that was a really poor choice, in my opinion, because we were paying almost as much as we would have for support just for someone to monitor and tell us it was down. And so it was kind of, we had to wait three years to get out of that, and when we did, so we have the money, we've been looking at budgeting the money for it now. But some of the reasons that the phone system is an issue is when it was purchased, it has the capability to have what's called local survivability. That means when a connection goes down to a school, the phone system can still call out and calls can still be made with it. Our system doesn't have that capability. They never purchased it for it, and so it's an issue. We saw this recently with Cobry Schools. They lost connection to Hurley Elementary, and their phone system was down for three days. So it's something that, it's, you know, in an emergency, you don't want that situation happening. And there's some other things that go along with that. The PA systems in this district were put in before I graduated high school, and I had my 23th reunion last year. So I'll date myself. And we're trying to ask our phone system to communicate with that system. And I mean, it's an ancient technology, and trying to get the two to interface is really difficult. And so those are some of the things that we see. Voicemail doesn't go to email, so if you're out for extended periods of time, it's hard to access. There's a lot of new features in new phone systems that, for emergency calling, where if a 911 call is made, it patches it into certain individuals. You can record it, you can listen in on the audio, so it's very pertinent to what's going on nowadays. Also, mobile features and things like that. The other big issue is that the system is no longer supported by Cisco. All its software support and hardware support's end of life. So if we have to buy parts, we have to buy used or refurbished, which usually have no warranty either. And so it's kind of an issue that we see that's just going to get worse. And so that's why I came to talk to you. We're trying to figure out places in our budget to try to do it. We've looked at SB 9, but we do see it as, similar to the camera systems and a lot of the things that schools are looking at, it's something that really should be looked at as a solution. And then I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Questions from the board?
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Have you talked to anybody at Western about this?
Yes.
Okay, because we replaced our phones at Western, and everything you talked about, we were having the same problem. And now our phones do everything that you just mentioned. So maybe instead of reinventing the wheel, you can go talk to them and...
We've looked at the NEC system that we're very familiar with, Joseph Hope, who runs it. We've looked at their NEC system. We've looked at a couple other ones. One of the big things now is that they don't want you to purchase a phone system outright. Most companies want you to rent it. They want you to pay for software as a service, so you pay a monthly bill for your phone system. It's not a feature I necessarily like, but we're having to deal with as well.
We like it because when someone dials 911, it'll automatically pop up on our phones and tells us exactly who dialed it, how long they're on the phone for, where at, and we can even listen in on the call if we have to.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of the features that we'd love to have.
So you also mentioned something about the PA system. Would we have to replace both?
No, there's ways. The current phone system, if we had support and we could get the software updates, there are ways you could have patched it in at the time. There are ways that most of them can tie in. Some of your PA systems were probably put in in the 80s, though, so it just depends on those systems. I'm familiar with the systems that are in Silver High La Plata at most of the schools, but I think Sixth Street, OHS, and I think those are the only two that have really ancient systems. But there should be a tie-in for those as well. And that's one of the nice things with the phone system is, the current phone system doesn't have the capability, but newer phone systems do have the capability of doing all calls similar to a PA system. So you can make the phone system into a PA system. So it works double duty.
And was there a price on our thing?
No, there isn't a price. We looked at this last year. We were working with Central Link, and at that time, it was about $110,000 because you have nine sites, and that would include phones and stuff like that. So there are other options now as well, and some, a couple of big phone companies bought each other, so pricing is becoming more competitive, so.
Other questions from the board?
Just would this qualify for general obligation funding?
It could, yes. It's not in the...
It's not one of our projects, but it would qualify...
It would qualify, yes. Or you could sell, if you had to, you could actually do tech notes as well for the same.
Tech notes, okay.
Or maybe that's a question we could also add for the state funding that we're talking about applying for to see, because it's a security issue right now, to be able to call out and access people that are key, like Eddie's talking about.
That's true. Yeah. Did we do tech notes? I don't think we did.
No, you didn't.
Okay.
But you can.
Yeah. Great.
Question I have. Would you prefer a lease system or outright?
I'd have to see what the leases are. Last year when we were looking, we would prefer one that we own because we already have the staff on site that can support it. We have the knowledge to run those systems. So I hate to pay someone else in Albuquerque or, you know, somewhere else in the US to support our phone system when we have the capability in-house.
And so is this something that we would put out a request, an RFP, or just...
We could do an RFP, or we, like, Central Link has state contracts. A lot of the vendors, phone vendors have either on CES or a state purchasing contract, so we can go with multiple ones. We've evaluated about four different companies last year, so we'll have multiple bids as well. And then the vendors are aware we're looking at multiple companies.
And so this is something that you've already put into motion to at least get some pricing on?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
That cost that you were talking about, the $110,000, when you had looked into it before, did that include, like, software, the phones themselves, everything?
That was everything.
Oh, includes, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brown? Questions? Other questions from the board? Mr. Potts, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening, under information and presentations, we have the Budget Committee presentation, Mrs. McCain, Director of Finance. Welcome, Mrs. McCain.
President, Billups, and board members, Mr. Brown, Melinda. I'm going to give the same budget presentation that I gave at my last budget meeting. Gone over all of these numbers and tried to come up with, you know, different answers. And because of where we are with, you know, the loss of students, we have to look at changing the way that we're doing things.
Mrs. McCain, before you get started, I also see that, and I don't know if this is a separate piece, or you're going to plug them in when you need them, Mr. Shane Coker and Mr. Peter Lamardo.
They will segue in right at the end when I'm finishing it, so.
Okay. Perfect.
Yes. What I began with is basically the formula that they use, they being head of the Public Education Department, they use a certain formula for figuring what our SEG is. Our SEG is the money that, the base money, our operational budget, that is funded to the schools so that we can do the biggest portion of running the school district. And they base it on the number of students that we have. They give a weighted value to the number of students based on where they are in education. I mean, like, our kindergarten students, they give a little more weight to, as it costs a little bit more to teach them. And then as we get to the middle school and high school, those values go down a little bit less because it doesn't cost quite as much for, in their determination, for the funding of those students. But if you look at, I've done a comparison of our units, these are students times their unit value, you know, the weighted value that the Public Ed Department has given them. And we have our kindergarten students, we, last year we had 293.76 units. This year, we have 268. We're down roughly about 25 units on our kindergarten students. Our basic students, the K-12, we're, as you can see, it's significantly down from this, next year is going, is going to be down from this year, and we're looking at about 168 units that that's gone down. Our special education units, not quite as much, but still, it does impact our bottom line, you know, because as you can see, all of these numbers are going down, they're not going up, and when you're talking about funding, that's not a positive thing. We are funded for our elementary fine arts, and those units have gone down, I think it's about 1.75. Our bilingual program, we haven't been funded for them in probably three years, and so there's nothing, no gain, no loss there. Elementary PE, the Public Ed Department, the only elementary PE that they actually fund is at Sixth Street because they are small school funding. Our TNE, that is the formula that they came up, the Public Ed Department comes up with to allocate for the teachers, and it's based on our teacher, our staff's education, you know, how many years they have in education, what the degree credentials that they have, whether they have a master's or bachelor's. We get an added value for their education as they move up in the, as they get more education. Our national certified board, certified teacher, we had a teacher last year. She's not with us this year, and so that factor is gone. We have at-risk index, that's a calculation of, you know, student mobility and some other factors that tells us, you know, where we're going to be as far as the loss of students or if we were to actually get some students, which would be nice. Our school size adjustments, those have gone down as well, and our charter school student activities, that's gone up a little bit. The district size adjustment units, those are used to calculate, we get small school funding for Sixth Street Elementary, and we also get extra funding for Cliff Schools. We have the homeschool student program. We really don't have anybody continuously in that, so we don't have any units for that one. In figuring the SEG, basically the way that they calculate the value of the dollars that they're giving us per student by the grade level that they're in, is figured by taking the cost index, which is the numbers after, you know, like, the kindergarten students get 1.44 of the cost index. They multiply that by the TNE, and then the unit value is the dollar amount that they say, we're going to fund every school this much for every student, and the weighted number that comes out is, you know, we get $6,755.92 per kindergarten student, and then as it goes to the different grade levels, the value changes based on the formula that they have created. This year, when we're comparing our program units, you can see that we have a distinct loss in units. We don't have quite as many students, and so even though we have more of a unit value, our unit value went up by about $75, we have fewer students to apply that number to, so we're still going to get less money than we did last year. In the less non-categorical amount, what the state of New Mexico does is if we receive federal funding for the forest reserve, for our abhorrent taxes, for our copper distribution, anything that we get that's not generated directly from the state, they take 75% of that and reduce what they're funding us with. So if they give us $100,000, they will only give us credit for $25,000. They absorb that and remove it from the SEG that they're giving us. So it's kind of hard to get ahead when they're always taking it a little bit back at each time. So this year, we came out, when we're looking at our SEG, we're down $731,000 from last year. And when we look at all of our funding, or most of our funding sources, then our SEG, of course, is our largest source of revenue, but we also have our copper distribution, and that, of course, comes from the mine, our local taxes, our property taxes that is generated for our operational budget. It is broken out into different categories, but this is a portion that's applied to our operational budget. Our indirect cost is the cost that we are funded from the other federal grants, like, we have Title I and Title II and IDEA B. Those are federal grants, and so we're allowed a percentage of those grants to be taken from those grants and put into our operational budget as an administrative cost. This year, the percentage that we were allowed is 2.54%. That percent changes every year. It's given to us by PETA, and we are allowed to move that from those grants into our operational budget as a revenue. Each year, we have the donation, Verizon lease, those are pretty steady. Every year, for as long as I can remember being here, Freeport-McMoRan has given us $10,000 to allocate out to the schools for student travel, supplies, but it just needs to be given directly to the students. The Verizon lease, we have the Verizon tower that's over in the high school now, and we get $1,000 a month, each month for the lease on that tower. Our E-rate funding is money that's generated by Ben. He does the applications and everything, and it's dollars that are generated because of our technology. And we're getting, as you can see, it went down this year because what Ben has done is he's implemented some changes to our phone systems and our technology, which it's going to reduce the cost of our communications bills, so we're not going to see it in revenue, but we will see it in cost savings in our communication costs. So, and again, we are down in overall revenue of $781,029. Okay. One of the legislative mandates that we had to address and make sure that we were within compliance was the increased minimum salaries for the teacher licensure levels. We had to go to $36,000 minimum salary for a Level 1 teacher. We were at $34,505. We had to go to $36,000. We had to make sure that on our salary schedule, we cannot pay anybody less than $36,000 that is a Level 1 teacher. Our Level 2 teachers, we have to pay a minimum of $44,000. We were already at $45,320, so that one was a lot easier to absorb. And then our Level 3 teachers, we had to go to $54,000 minimum, and we were at $52,530. So in implementing these level increases, we had to adjust our salary schedules so that we met all of this criteria. And then on top of that, an additional mandate was a 2.5% salary increase for all of our teachers. And so that made those percentage increases, when you look at it, and you think 2.5% is not a whole lot, but because of the level increases, the average teacher salary increase was about 4.8%. And when I say teachers, the people that are paid off of our teacher salary schedules, we have our teachers, our social workers, our counselors, our nurses, and our CODAs that are paid off of those salary schedules, so they were in benefit of the level increases as well as the 2.5% salary increases. They also mandated that we had to give our employees an average 2% salary increase for all non-teaching staff, all other non-teaching staff. And so what we did is we had a conversation with our administrators here in the district and felt like we wanted to be able to give all of our, the rest of our staff, a 2.5% increase, as, you know, as well as the teachers, because, you know, our teachers are wonderful, but they couldn't, you know, survive without having all of the people that help them. We have our custodians, we have, you know, IAs, librarians, I mean, all of that support staff are what make up our schools and keep our schools going. And so our administrators agreed to take a reduced, less than 2% increase so that we could give all of the other staff 2.5% as well. Okay. Now, the biggest portion of our budget is our salaries and benefits. I mean, we have a $22 million budget, and of that, $19,540,000, which is roughly about 91% of our budget, is salary and benefits. We have the employee-based salaries, I went through person by person, line by line. We had multiple, multiple staffing meetings to come up with ideas for what we could do to try to save money because obviously, we have fewer kids to teach, we don't need the same staff that we had teaching, you know, last year, but we still have to meet the needs of our students. And so we're looking for ideas. You know, I talked to the Budget Committee when we had our first session and told them, you know, please give me ideas, you know, if you don't want to stand up and say something in the meeting, you know, please, by all means, send me an email. And I had one person come to me with an idea for some, you know, changes, but people just, we don't, you know, I mean, we've tightened the reins so much over the years that there's not a lot of flexibility for you're going to take money from. I mean, you know, we have student travel, we have supplies. Well, we need all of those things to keep everybody involved in this, you know, the learning process, and so it's a really hard time trying to meet these numbers and not have some negative fallout, you know? Our expenditures that we have to fit into this budget this year, we have, and I went through, and we, I mean, I worked with Barry on our utilities and looked at all of our utilities. I got with Ben on the communications and internet. I looked at every place that we could possibly try to find the savings. One of the things that we're awarding tonight is we're retrofitting all of our lighting fixtures to LED lights, which there's been a cost analysis by PNM that says that we're going to save over $100,000, once we get them all in place and everything, we're going to save over $100,000 a year on electricity just by having these new lights. That's going to be wonderful, but it doesn't help us this year, you know, because we're just starting the process. So we have to look at, you know, electricity, you know, in the district, $400,000, and that is, like, I think we're right at, like, $401,000 getting to the end of this year, so not a lot of room to wiggle. I mean, it's like, what do you have class in the dark? I mean, I don't know, but, so you just have to try to think of things we can do to save money. We have electricity, $400,000, natural gas, $65,000. That's for Cliff and, no, propane is for Cliff. They're on... propane is for Cliff, there, there, propane out there. Water and sewage for all our schools, $230,000. And communications and internet, $300,000 a year. We have our insurance, our property and risk insurance. That was a shock, we got to the spring budget meeting and they informed us that it was going up $62,000 from this year to next year. And there's not really a reason, because we really haven't had any claims at this point, you know, to drive that number. Now with the, the changes that we're making with, because of the shootings in schools and stuff like that, we're having to implement some changes and those could in the future impact this number. I don't know whether they would be positive or negative depending on what we do and, you know, how it's rated with the Palms and Associates, our insurance provider. Student travel, I mean, the majority of that is, is in the high school and middle school level for sports. And Mr. O'Hara and Lisa Yular, I mean, they work really hard at looking at those schedules for the kids they're traveling to. I mean, we have looked at everything to try to pare it down to get, you know, keep the quality that we have for students, but save as much money as possible. And, you know, the numbers are still large and we just, we, we have that expense and we need to be able to cover it. Professional development, that number has gone down quite a bit because the public ed department, we had our Title II fund, which is a federal grant that they give us, it used to be used for salaries and benefits, and now they moved that to be almost entirely for professional development. And so we're able to take that out of all of them. The teacher and classroom professional development can come out of that grant. Anything that's not in the classroom still has to come out of our operational budget. And then the supplies and materials, you know, we're talking paper and, you know, things like that. Paper, we spend thousands and thousands of dollars every year on. I mean, we're working towards getting to be a paperless community, but I still have a shred box that's full at the end of every month. I mean, it's just, we just generate a lot of paper. Anyway, we have additional expenditures, they're, you know, various and sundry. We put $10,000 in our budget for the backpack program so that we can buy supplies that means those backpacks for our elementary and, I don't know if we have it, can we have it at the middle school still? Our backpack home at the middle school and elementary so that the kids, you know, that they, the counselors see them even for some of those kids, so that they can have a meal on the weekend or, you know, just a snack or something to eat so that they're not going without. In the summertime, they have a semi-lunch program, so that kind of eases us, our conscience when we're not here to pack those backpacks for them every year, because some of those kids only get the meals that they get at school. And we have board expenses, that's used for professional development, that's supplies. It's also, when you look at that number, they also pay for all of the like retirement gifts and stuff like that for the employees out there, so it's not really the board's expense, but that's where it's been categorized to come out of, so. Dual credit and textbooks, we don't have an adoption this year, so thank goodness, that number's a lot smaller than it was last year. I think we had a budget of almost $200,000 because we had the social studies adoption last year. Our medical fees, it is what it is. And then our other fees, I mean, we just have so many different small things that you pay for over the year that you don't realize how it adds up into a number, you know, like $150,000, but we have registrations, we have subscriptions, we have background checks, all of these other, you know, just little, you know, $20, $30 at a time, increasing we're at $150,000. Anyway, when going through and running the numbers, I came up with, you know, the revenue that we're tendentially going to have is $21,527,954. We hope to, without any big events precluding it, have a $500,000 cash carryover from this year, which we didn't really expect to have a cash carryover, so 500,000 is good. With our expenditures that we have listed and, like I said, we tried to pare down everything to the bare bones so that we didn't have to look, you know, anywhere else for, for funding, but we were still at a deficit of almost $300,000 once we looked at, you know, all of the different things that we could do to try to increase revenue or decrease expenditures. And so we're left with the question, you know, how do we cover the deficit without having negative impact on our students? And there's not a lot of good answers. There's just not. The options, the first two options, eliminating elementary PE and eliminating elementary counselors, those are not state mandated programs that we have to have. We personally, as a district, don't feel like we want to try to function without them because I think our kids need them. I mean, you know, you look at the child obesity rate and we're going to tell the kids we're taking away elementary PE, not a good answer, you know? Counselors, I mean, with every school shooting and everything else that you hear, we need more people that are there helping the kids, not fewer people, you know? And so it just, you know, it's a no-win situation. And we had to look at our OHS program and what we could do to maybe change it or modify so that, you know, we still don't leave our kids that are at risk at OHS because they are, you know, they're there for a reason and they need it for a reason. And so we want to still be able to address that, but we have to look at how can we save money and keep the entire school district going? And, and so when you look at those first two options, eliminating elementary PE and eliminating elementary counselors, those are actually taking employees from their jobs and laying them off because we're eliminating those programs. There is no substituting or moving around. With OHS, we are able to look at some different aspects of how we were going to handle it. We can use attrition to, for some of those positions that people are retiring or moving away from the area. And then Candy and Lisa Lucero, that would make a listing for all of the, in our staff meetings, of all the credentials that all of the employees had, so that we could look at how we could move some, how to move people around, rather than losing people, move them into different areas or a different location where they may be needed because somebody else retired or, you know, there's a need for them. And so when we look at eliminating PE and elementary counselors, those people would be basically out the door because those are those positions that we're looking at getting rid of. With OHS, we were able to look at the reconfiguring the staff and maybe looking for a place at the high school to house those students and still address their needs because their needs need to be addressed and not, and be able to save that funding, you know? And so in my last meeting, because it's hard to stand here, I mean, it was hard to come up with, you know, have people give you ideas that you're thinking, "No, those are people, those are people that are tied to those numbers and, and they're important." But we have to look at the impact of the whole, we have to look at the good of the whole and, and try to be as careful with our students and our budget so that we can meet the needs of all the students and, and still be able to keep the school going without having a complete negative impact on students. So anyway, we had, we gave the, the people in the committee the option to vote for what option they would look for. I gave them pieces of paper so that they didn't have to stand and, you know, say something they didn't feel like, you know, because nobody chose any of these easily. Every choice was made and it was a hard choice to make, but they had to look at the overall impact of, on everybody. And so the votes that we got for the staff that were there in the budget meeting, we had one vote to eliminate elementary PE, two votes to eliminate elementary counselors, and then 25 votes to reorganize OHS and come up with a different way of meeting the needs of those students, but not in the same fashion that we are doing right now. We have future concerns that we have to think about because this budget is not yet under my belt and already we're worried about next year, the next year. Our T and E is decreasing. We have a lot of our teachers who are getting really close to retirement that have lots of experience. And so, you know, it's wonderful that we have new teachers coming in and everything, but their value, their calculated value in the, the funding formula is not as high as the teachers that are, have been here for a long time. Our decreased enrollment, I mean, we're down 152 students from this year and so, you know, we're not seeing us move the other direction in increasing enrollment. So, I mean, it's, it is what it is. The risk insurance, like I said, no warning, $62,000 more than it was last year. And, you know, that's something you can't control, but we have to pay it. Our increased utility costs, each year, you know, I listen to the radio and I hear that, you know, PNM is getting a new, you know, authority to increase our rates again, and so we have to cap, you know, figure those in. We're hoping that after this, next year, once we have all the retrofitting in of the LED lights, that we should see that go down a little bit. And then when we were at the spring budget workshop, they also told us that there's going to be a 4% increase in our medical premiums for our employees, and that is both the employee and the employer portion. So it hits the employees and it hits the employer too. And because we, we paid the hottest portion of those premiums, the school will see the biggest cost. That's it. Now, I have Mr. Coker and Mr. Lamardo, they're going to come up and talk about the ideas that they've come up with and how to reconfigure OHS so that it's...
Michelle, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Do we have an idea about a projection for decreased numbers for next year, for 2018, 19? I know that's kind of a hard number, but I just, I'm seeing some of the...
Every year, we've been down about the same thing.
Every year, it's been going down at least 100.
Any other questions for Mrs. McCain at this point? All right, thank you. Mr. Coker and Mr. Lamardo, welcome.
Both like to say thank you, Superintendent Lynda, members of the board. Everybody here, I really hate, and I think we can all agree with this, I hate putting a dollar sign on a child. And I just want to go on a public statement that we should never, ever put a dollar sign on a child. Unfortunately, the numbers are what they are. I know that Mr. Coker and I, we've really talked, I know that my staff has given me tons of ideas. The community has talked with me at different times and it's just an awful position to be in. A few years ago, Mr. Ping decided that we should switch gears and go to the vocational track. And I totally believe in the vocational track. I have some students here who obviously are packing the house and they believe in it also. So with that being said, most schools are going that direction. Mr. Coker and I both agree that we should continue that direction. How does that look like? I don't know. I think Michelle just had that slide and I think you pretty much said half of my, what I'm going to say. So thank you. It's just unfortunate. Mr. Ping, my predecessor and my mentor, told me, Mr. Lamardo, if you can keep your kids at a certain amount, that's in between 80 to 90, that's a good amount. You get over 90 and the school's too small, lots of fights, lots of drama, lots of things. And I, I strive for that when I first started this position. So we started out a little bit under 90 and then as the fall semester progressed, I got up to, I think, 93 and 94. And just through a series of events, lots of different things that I really don't want to go into, it takes too much time, we're just currently down to about 63 students. And we just graduated 31 of those students. And so what happens is that OHS, we would attract students. We attracted a lot of students that were already, had dropped out and we got them through the system and they were able to graduate. And OHS had that purpose of credit recovery and also benefiting and helping this community and just being really positive. And I don't think anybody can doubt that. I don't know anybody that can really stand up and say what we did was horrible. In fact, I think there was obviously a need for it and I think everybody here agrees with that, wholeheartedly. For the first time in OHS history, if you're on a graduation, we, I had the goal and I pushed my welders to push through, which was the original dream of my predecessor, Mr. Ping. So thank you, Mr. Ping, I'm putting him on blast graduation and now. Of having students graduate from Western before they graduated with a high school diploma. And we did that. And that was just really awesome. Unfortunately, five years ago, I think it was 2,400 students is what we had in the district. And now I think we're hovering around 1,700. My numbers might be off. Texas is hiring like crazy, Arizona's hiring like crazy. And we're just seeing a mass exodus. It could be this, that, or the other. And our school attendance has just kind of dropped. And unfortunately, with that, we have the numbers that we do. So we have to make some hard decisions and some hard choices. I asked Mr. Coker, I said, "Do you ever wake up at 2:00 in the morning and not go back to sleep because you're so stressed about what's going on?" And he goes, "Oh, that's normal." I said, "Oh, okay." Well, at least he's got more hair than I do, so there's less to pull out. So it's very difficult. It's been stressful on myself and my staff and just some of my students, but it is what it is. Right now, I think we bring in with the 63 students, $338,000 roughly. And of course, on the board, it says that we can go through and we spend close to half a million dollars in salaries. We can't run a business like this and I'm sorry, no one, everyone would go bankrupt. We need change. I've racked my brain, Mr. Coker and I, we've, we've talked, again, talking with my staff. It's just difficult to understand what we need to do. With that being said, I think a lot of rumors, a lot of things have gone out through the community. My attendance started to drop with the underclassmen. They just kind of have this idea of, "Well, if you're just getting rid of us," a lot of trust issues. A lot of students are saying, "What are you going to do with us? What are you going to, how are you going to help us?" And we've kind of brainstormed, nothing's set in stone, obviously has to be approved. We want to be there for the students, we want to help them. But our students do, they do have some issues and I totally agree with that and I totally understand that, with trust. And what they need us to do is to give them that trust, to give them that help. And so we've come up with some ideas. Mr. Coker has those there and I'll be finished here in a few minutes. I just want to thank my staff, because I think there's so much to grant writing. And I know Ms. Tedford and Mr. Ping did an excellent job continuing the grants with Freeport-McMoRan, making this possible. And we still have quite a chunk of change that will, wherever it's divvied out, wherever it goes to, it will help these students and it will benefit them. So I just want to say thank you to them, thank you to all of you. If you have questions and you want immediate answers, I'm not sure of the caliber to give you everything, just there's a lot there, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Coker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown, President McMillan. Pretty much Lamardo said everything I was going to say, so I'm done. Thank you. No, just kidding, just kidding. One of the things that when Mr. Lamardo and I talked, you know, one of the visions for OHS was to continue the vocational track, continue the vocational piece of OHS. It seems like the students there really thrive in that kind of environment. And one of the things that I thrived in my environment prior to coming here is working into the career tech education programs. And one of my goals while at Silver High was to increase the amount of programs that we offer through there. So without addressing, you know, kind of exactly what we're doing with the opportunity high school students, just kind of talking about a little bit about what we're going to do with our programs there that will be available to every student there, is increasing our career pathways. Programs such as welding, electrical, HVAC and plumbing. I'm in talks with an Albuquerque, or up in Albuquerque with a man up there about bringing our carpentry program down here. All these programs that we want to offer are certification-based. Now, kind of going back to talking about opportunity high school students, one of the things we do under... Now, kind of going back to talking about opportunity high school students, one of the things we do understand is that every student, and this goes for students at Silver High School too, current ones, not every student fits the mold of the traditional classroom. They don't, you know, it just doesn't work for them to do seven classes a day, all academics, a couple electives here, go home, do their homework, and come back to school the next day and do it all over again. It just doesn't work for all students. And that's definitely realized by me, by Mr. Lamardo. So, looking at programs that we can offer for opportunity high school students as well as Silver High School students, is, is programs that are going to be flexible for them. We understand that most students work, you know, and probably most of the students are an integral part of their family income and we have to keep that in mind. So, we're looking at some flexible schedules really for those students, all of our students. Definitely keeping our online classes going, some students really thrive in that. And I think Mrs. Mylum's already kind of been working on increasing our licensures for Odyssey, but that might be something I'll talk to you later about. Also having some of our Silver High School teachers working strictly and exclusively with these, with our, with these students from OHS. Also having them have full access to all of our elective programs. So, the programs that I just mentioned are not just for Silver High, but they're for all of our students. So, continuing co-op, they can still get credit while they're working. Basically, just keeping alive that vocational track and also the dual credit. Mr. Lamardo and I were talking about trying to get him a pod area, basically he'll have four classrooms. So, and just in case you didn't know, Mr. Lamardo's going to be coming over to the high school, is that correct?
As far as I know.
Okay. As far as I know, it hasn't changed, so. If, if everything transpires the way it's going, Mr. Lamardo would be coming over to the high school and he'd be kind of in charge of, or not kind of, but he would be in charge of this particular program to help our opportunity high school students as well as our Silver High School students. And then he'd be in charge of working in conjunction with Western, New Mexico University, bringing actual professors into the classroom, teaching dual credit in the classroom. And then of course, we'd also, you know, obviously offer our dual credit programs that we have there as well to every student. Mr. Brown and I talked about some ideas. I'm not going to bring them up because they were kind of brought to them today and stuff, so we still need to hammer out some more ideas and everything else. But that's pretty much it. I mean, we do want to offer a safe location for all of our students, especially the ones from Opportunity High School. One of the things that Mr. Lamardo and I also talked about was kids didn't want to go to Silver High because they just didn't get along with other kids at Silver High or just didn't get along with teachers over there. And we respect that, we want to respect that for all the students. So, we want to offer something that will make them feel safe, secure, break down those trust issues and build up that trust between Silver High and Opportunity High and make us all one big family. That's all we're about right here, so. Do I have to add something else?
Yeah, I won't drop the mic, but so just real quick, just looking at our attendance so far, so thirty-one, we graduated. We have sixteen juniors and Mr. Coker came over today. Most of those juniors only need probably three, four classes, so it'd only be half a day. And I know that, you know, again, it's working with this trust and some of them are like, "I'll never go back." Offhand, just a warning that I think ten of those have just have put their heels in the ground and said, "I will not go." And that is difficult for us to handle because that's ten more students. And I see Michelle cringing, saying, "Don't say that, Lamardo." Unfortunately, it is what it is, so I have to let you know. But sixteen of those juniors, some of them are going to be taking part in the summer, summer school. And so, they'll be getting some credit, so that'll, that'll help them maybe go down to two or three. And so, we can hopefully work with these juniors and get them going there. I have about nine ninth graders and those, I'm still working with those. I've called them in individually and talked with them. Again, there's this whole idea of the trust. And then also probably about eight tenth graders. And some of them are from Cobra, they're going to go back to Cobra. One girl, she had some bullying issues at Silver High and I totally understand why she would not want to go back. Henceforth, the idea of having the pod close to the flagpoles and the library where it could be safe and it's something that we can work with. Again, this is kind of in your hands of what we're trying to do to help make sure. But with that being said, there's, there's a sum that, and of course, sometimes kids will change their minds on a dime too. And so, we're really kind of in there. The last thing that we want is to lose any kids.
So, as Mr. Lamardo said, I mean, it's kind of hard to know, to address each and every needs of the students that are coming over or possibly coming over until we know the needs. But I can guarantee you that once I know the needs, we will do everything in our power to meet the needs of every student. And that not, not just for OHS, but Silver High School students as well. Because again, we do have Silver High School students that are kind of on that cusp right there and go either way, so. And that's all, that's all it's about. Questions? Thank you. Questions from the board?
I have one question, Mr. Coker and Mr. Lamardo. So, right now, OHS is in a current four-day week, right? So, is that, are they going to be grandfathered into the high school or are they going to go straight all week?
That, that is something we can address as it comes about. Again, it kind of goes with that flexible scheduling. So, if these kids have already kind of set up a, like a work schedule, they work on Fridays or something like that, we can definitely work around something like that. We still have to meet obviously the amount of hours for class times and all that stuff. But we're going to look at flexible scheduling, meet those needs if they arise.
OHS, we didn't make a calendar, so we would be on a normal five-day week.
Five-day week, okay.
So, if it was, it would be the same, it'd be a five-day week. We can go to the high school, it'd be a five-day week, so.
Other questions from the board?
I do, I have a question. I, I guess for me, and I don't know how much you can divulge, but I feel like part of the concern is that people don't know what that structure's going to look like at the high school and they do appreciate the safe haven pieces, what I've heard from people, the flexibility, the vocational, but also that safe haven piece where they don't feel like the mainstream is not where I want to be. I need the flexibility, I need this alternative route. And so, I think part of the apprehension or anxiety or the, you know, their inability to buy in is the unknown. And that speaks to the trust. So, I think it would be helpful to know what some of those potential proposals look like as far as the structure because I think sometimes it's hard to wrap your head around an option if you don't know what the option is.
Right.
And I, I don't know how much of that you can divulge, but I mean, I've heard brainstorming sessions where it's, well, there's a separate pod and a separate secretary and there are student advocates that would work solely with these kiddos that, you know, would prefer to have a little more guidance or something outside of that mainstream. But I think, to me, that's what I'm hearing.
All right. You want to address or you want me to?
Well, I just wanted to say too, that more than likely I won't be an admin right now. And I'm perfectly fine with that. I'm just happy to have, especially I watch the PowerPoint, I'm just happy to be employed, so. And I'm more than fine going back in the classroom. I think some people figured I'd be mad or hateful or spiteful. I'm not that way. I'm just easygoing and if you all know me, that's pretty much how I am, I'm just easygoing. So, with that, I called in every student that I could and just tried to explain to them some ideas. Again, it's a new idea, it's something different. Maybe there's, they just want to be guaranteed, which is I think your point, how can you guarantee? And right now, I don't know how to guarantee that. We have some ideas, we have some thoughts, we have some brainstorms. It's just unfortunate, like I said when I first started, it's hard to make these decisions because of the economic situation we're in.
One of the things that we were brainstorming, as you put it, the, the pod area would be like four separate classrooms that would be devoted strictly for, you know, the incoming students, should it go that way for Opportunity High School. And, and within that pod, we'd have computer labs set up for their online classes, classroom setting for obviously Mr. Lamardo to work with whatever his expertise is and then also have some teachers coming in from the Silver High School, same area. It's kind of hard to sit there and talk about two different schools when you talk about one school. But anyway, we'd have the Silver High School staff coming in, working with the kids, maybe in some core classes such as English and everything else. And then also we'd have availability and we'd have to work the schedule. I mean, this is not a perfect model by any means. It's something that's going to have to kind of be massaged and, and, you know, adjusted on the fly as you go. But we're hoping by the end, or at least by mid-year, we have something solid, the kids are trusting it and it's working. And if it's not working, we'll make adjustments to make it work, so.
So, like an opportunity wing is what we're looking at?
That's probably the best way to put it there after DAs.
And I think my contract ends the fifteenth of June, so if I'm not an admin next year, I still will be working with him until the end if necessary afterwards to make this go forward. Because it's solvable, every problem's solvable. It's messy, but it's, it's solvable.
Well, it's not really messy because in essence, we're not shutting down the school itself or the programs, we're just moving them somewhere.
Relocation.
And the kids and everything they're doing will continue just at a different location, is that correct?
That's true.
Yes, sir. And honestly, I think it's, it's going to open up a lot more opportunity because one of the things that Mr. Lamardo and I talked about at the beginning of the year was trying to get some more OHS kids over to take our elective classes, our shop classes, welding classes, our auto trades, whatever. And I don't know, I don't know if that ever came about, I don't know what happened there. But at least with the students over at, at the high school, housed at the high school, those opportunities are easily available for those students and everything. So, relocation, yes, more opportunities, I see that in the future.
And more opportunities for not just OHS, but for students at Silver High as well?
For all of our students, yes, sir.
With the VOTech, the flexible scheduling.
Correct.
I'd like to give a shout out just to, and in some areas, I'm not used to the high school, never taught there, but Mr. Daniel Staley, wonderful, wonderful man, I guess he's got several preps. So, if you want to go to the high school and watch this guy and he's happy and he has several different preps and he is phenomenal at vocational. And J.R. Dondo, some people say they love him or hate him, but he does do the job and he can function with getting awards and taking his kids out. It's not just me, I'm very limited in the vocational experience that I have and then also going along with Ms. Flores with the culinary. I think this is something like what you're saying and I just want to give a shout out to them. If we transplant, I think the opportunities there are just going to be phenomenal. It's just a matter of how do we get from point A to point B.
Other questions from the board? I've got a couple of questions. One is on the funding that Freeport is, is provided. That will still be available, I guess, for, for the students if we move forward into this reorganization?
I'm not sure legally how it would go. I'm getting nods from the table that would say yes.
Mrs. McCain or Mrs. Mylum, you're saying that we...
It's set aside in a separate account and it is for their, the fees and, and... Yeah, for the welding classes, the lab fees and stuff for the different classes that they were taking. So, those will be available to anybody in any of the VOTech classes at Western through Silver High.
So, we won't, we won't be losing out on, on that money? Mm-hmm, okay. And we're looking at also applying for, you know, I think you, you said that the grants opened? So, Silver High School will be applying for that as well, so. Okay. And then in its current form, OHS, does it receive any additional funding for size or small school, school funding?
It qualifies for small school funding because it started out as a credit recovery school.
Mr. Brown asked me to investigate that at the very beginning of the year and I thought, yes, we're going to make some money. I know that Mr. Ping had researched that also and we just kept hitting roadblock after roadblock. It has to be a certain distance, I think, from...
The, what it is, is we spoke to David Kred, who is the financial person for the state. We've been trying for years to get small school funding for OHS. They see it as an alternative school, they do not, it's a credit recovery, they do not recognize it as a high school. We have fought for that for years. We've tried to tell them they have their own student body, they have their own opportunities, they have their own dances, their own yearbooks, they have everything. The reason why is because they do not have boundaries, which means that they don't, you don't go in there and say, "Okay, this part of Silver City has to go to OHS, this part of Silver City has to go to Silver High." Because we don't have boundaries set for each of our high schools, then therefore they cannot consider it a small school funding. If they did, you would receive about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars more for that school.
Thank you.
And we wouldn't be having an issue.
And I know this is, this has been difficult for, for everybody involved and certainly not the situation that we would like to be in. And it's kind of, you know, we're kind of in limbo. The board needs to make a decision. We would like to have plans in place for, you know, basically a reorganization at Silver High. But it's kind of difficult. You, you all are waiting on the board, the board's, you know, wanting answers. And so, I know it puts everybody in a difficult spot and, but it's, it's unfortunate with primarily, I think, the loss of enrollment to the district scene year after year that we're in this situation because I know myself and I would think the entire board, the last thing we want to do is, is cut opportunities. And, and from hearing from you all, I think it sounds like potentially there could be more opportunities. So, that's, that's, that's good to hear. Any other questions or comments from the board or Mr. Brown?
Yes.
All right, thank you all very much. Next on our agenda this evening is, under information and presentations to the board, is the SCEA. Ms. Bustillos, welcome.
Not that I'm glad this is like the last meeting of the school year, but there's four more days. Four days. So, it's great to see government and civics at work with our students and our staff from OHS. You know, exercising their First Amendment rights, following the rules set before them by administration, but also being able to do free speech, the right to gather, use their voice to show their support for their school and their teachers. Their voice matters, they matter. I do want to say that for you students, it takes a lot of courage for anyone, not just students, but for anyone to stand up, but especially more for you students because often student voice goes unheard for whatever reason or it's not taken seriously. And so, just want to applaud you for taking the time and the effort and the energy to come here and use the voice that you have. We still need to follow rules though, so if you want to speak, make sure you have your form filled out. We're still at the bargaining table at the request of the district. We had to send out a second survey regarding common planning time and adding it to the secondary level, middle school and high school teachers. There was some confusion about common planning time and the difference between common planning time and a prep time. And so, the form was edited to include a differentiation between that so that common planning time is an opportunity for licensed staff, our teachers, our counselors, nurses, ancillary staff, to be able to get together, to plan collaboratively with colleagues and peers to create more dynamic and thorough lesson plans, unit plans, cross-curricular plans, you know, much like they would do at the elementary level. And then also to differentiate prep time, which is for the teachers used to grade... And then also to differentiate prep time, which is for the teachers' use to grade or copy or meet with parents. Occasionally you have to meet with admins about things, um, to basically just do things in your classroom, uh, as guaranteed by the CBA. So we're still working on that. We'll be back next week to hopefully, uh, share information and, uh, come up with a solution, um, about common planning time and things like that. So that's what we're looking forward to. We want to have it settled, um, you know, so that we can start the eighteen, nineteen square off with a working, uh, collective bargaining agreement. So that's where we are.
Questions from the board?
I do. Would that common planning time, uh, help to dedicate some time for the vertical alignment we keep talking about?
Oh, my gosh, yes. It would. Um, I know that, you know, we want to be able to move fluidly from grade level to grade level, you know, so that our students are achieving and doing more as far as their learning experience, so that our test scores can improve because the align, uh, the curriculum has been aligned. It would also give teachers, especially um, the secondary teachers who may not have the same prep time as their colleagues, who would like to plan those cross-curricular activities but aren't able to meet because there's not time in the day to do that. We've gotten feedback from elementary teachers that it would be a good thing for secondary teachers to have. We've gotten feedback that say, well, if they get it, then they also need to get rid of their own prep time. But like I said, we need to differentiate between common planning time and prep time and that's what we're working to do, so. But if we had that time, then we would be able to meet, you know, sixth grade to seventh grade or eighth grade to ninth grade as they transition from one grade level to the next or one, um, from the elementary to the secondary. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Very well. Next on our agenda this evening is information to the board and the first up is the superintendent, Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, members of the board, members of the community, again, welcome. Glad to see each and every one of you here. What I would need to discuss, Letter A, the PSFA Security Projects Program, was briefly touched upon during the work session by Mr. Ward. Uh, there was a memorandum distributed to schools on May eighth, two thousand and eighteen from the Public School Facilities Authority, also known as PSFA. And what they are proposing is that a school district seeking a grant for a school security project shall apply to the council, council being the Public School Capital Outlay Council, on a form that includes an assessment of a school's security system. As Mr. Ward pointed out, I had asked for each of our schools to have a security, a threat assessment conducted and the Silver City Police Department assisted in that endeavor. And they did create threat assessments. So we will be applying for some of these funds when they do become available. And again, as Mr. Ward had pointed out earlier in the work session, uh, via the scoring and ranking criteria that has been established by PSFA, uh, the first and the, the most recognized way would be for local county or state law enforcement or first responders, which is the first priority to actually conduct the, the assessment. And so we have got Captain Vialobos with the Silver City Police Department that is in the process of completing the assessments on the form that is required by PSFA. And once that is done, we will definitely be submitting it to apply for some of these funds.
Questions from the board?
Just is he aware of the timeline as far as what we're looking at for application of the grant?
Yes, ma'am. He's received all of this information. I forwarded it to him.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
One recommendation I would make, uh, when we get that application is that in whatever projects we can identify, safety and security or meets their, their criteria, um, I would say we fill that until it says forty million. And um, it's kind of one of those things, I mean, kind of jokingly saying that, but you, you ask for more hoping that you get half. There's only ten million to go around, whatever year it's gonna be, hopefully next year. And, and so I, I would say we, we ask for as, as much as we can on that application. You know, if they, if they limit, okay, you know, schools are gonna be ten thousand or fifteen thousand, we, we max that out. And, and that would be a, my recommendation on that.
Great suggestion. We can absolutely do that.
Other questions or comments from the board? Very well, thank you for that. And I think you also have, uh, Item B, the two hundred and sixty day employee calendar?
Yes, sir. For the two hundred and sixty day employee calendar for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year, what that is, it's the full-time employees, uh, such as folks from central office, our custodial staff, maintenance staff. The, there's a separate calendar. Uh, it was asked by the board for us to be able to specifically list the dates that are going to be half-days. And so on the calendar, half-day would be November twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, just before the Thanksgiving break, as well as December twenty-first, which is just before the winter break or the Christmas break. And then the last half-day for the next school year would be on the last day of school, which is May twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen.
Questions for Mr. Brown on the calendar?
I have one. Um, so then it, it goes on to say the two hundred and sixty employees will have to select three days for either the fall or spring breaks. So within the schedule, they'll have the flexibility to pick three days that they have to work or take off, that they can take off.
They, they have the option of taking off three days, either in the fall break or the spring break, or a combination thereof.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Other questions for Mr. Brown on, on, um, that item? Thank you. Any, any other updates?
No, sir.
Information at this time?
Very well.
Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda this evening is, uh, Mrs. Candy Mylum, Associate Superintendent.
Mr. President, members of the board, um, we've got notice, um, last week that we received the pre-K initiative grant that I wrote. Um, we're going to be able to have a full-day program for eighty students and it, they have to be four years old by September first. That will also include, um, a program out at CLIF. So together it will be for eighty students. Um, right now, we're not real sure. We're looking at several different, we have several different options for us, um, splitting them up maybe with two or three different elementaries. Uh, we've looked at La Plata, we've looked at several different areas, but we just don't, we don't have everything jilt yet. It will have a pre-K coordinator that will have an administrative license that will be responsible for the, um, the program and all the evaluations. But we're real excited. We, we have begun, uh, registration so far. We've had sixteen kids already sign up. Um, it'll be on a first come, first served basis. So once we get to the eighty kids, it will be, um, closed. So we're, it has nothing to do with your income, it has nothing to do with your child's ability. Um, it's, just have to fit the criteria of be four by September first.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one, Candy. Would the eighty qualify for enrollment to, enrollment for students or is it just separate because it's part of the grant?
It's, it's separate, but they're trying to start incorporating within the next gen star, the pre-K kids into our SEG, what Michelle was talking about, part of your enrollment. But right now, it's a separate initiative. The kids still have to be reported through STARS and, and through our information system. However, it will not generate funds because they get, they're giving us the money to run the program. And it's a pretty tight budget. Um, they gave us sixty thousand as part of, I think it was five hundred and fifty thousand was our total, but sixty thousand of that is considered a, a startup. So that's for anything that you might need, um, like supplies, furniture, playground equipment, things like that. So that's what we're, we're working on and as soon as we get the pre-K coordinator on board, I want that person to be able to make a lot of the decisions, so.
Good job. Thank you.
I have, I have two questions. Um, one is, are we gonna have a waiting list once we close that?
Oh, I, it would have to be because we can only take eighty.
Just in case someone decides not to come or something. And then the second question, um, did I just lost my train of thought? It'll come to me in a second.
Dr. Diaz, I'll interject while you?
Please. Hosted.
If that's all right. So the, the funding with the grant would hundred, be a hundred percent for the whole program? There would be no operational, in a sense, cost expended?
We may have to pay for part of the coordinator's, um, salary if, it depends on how much it's going to cost us for the, the school, the teachers that we employ. If we had a first-year teacher, of course, that's a lot cheaper than paying for a person with twenty-five years' experience. So it depends, and it also depends on if you have, um, somebody with benefits, with medical benefits. That can cost ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year. So it just depends on what personnel that we're, that we end up, um, putting over there.
They would follow the same salary schedule in a sense?
Yes, it's on the same salary schedule.
Would they follow the same count, school calendar?
Yes.
Okay. So at CLIF, they would be on the four-day and Silver, they would be on the five-day?
Right. And the first year, there would be no transportation, um, because of logistical issues. Um, after that, we're hoping to get funding for the transportation the following year.
Okay.
I got it.
Other questions?
Okay.
So is any of our funding gonna be based on our, like, is it gonna be based on our attendance? Because I know some of the programs that we have that are coming up are gonna be, you know, we only get the full funding if we have?
Like the K-3 plus?
Yeah, like the K-3 plus.
No, no, it's, it's, uh, this, you get it and you spend it and that's it.
Okay.
Good question.
Mr. Brown, any questions, comments?
No, sir.
Other questions, comments? Mrs. Mylum, any other updates for us?
Um, we're just about finished with testing. Um, hallelujah. Um, it's been a, a long haul. Um, I, I'm so grateful that I don't have to go back into the classroom again, that my days are numbered and they're almost done. Um, it's been a long, uh, three or four months with testing solid, starting with IStation and then going into Park, SBA, and then now ending up with end of the course exam. So it's been a long, we've had a lot of issues with, um, the platforms, that, the testing platforms not loading tests correctly, not, they're shutting down. Um, we've had more issues this time than in, in twenty years that I've done testing. So it's been, it's been a challenge. So I'm very grateful that it's about over. And I'm sure the kids are even more excited that it's almost over.
Well, thank you for that, that work and, and dedication to making sure everybody takes their EOC.
Yeah, yeah, not very popular, but that's okay.
Thank you. Um, next on our agenda this evening, eh, and under information to the board is, uh, Mrs. Michelle McCain, Director of Finance and Financial Reports.
Um, we reviewed the finance reports this morning with the finance committee. Um, we're at three point eight-five percent in our, um, cash reserve right now. We're so, pretty much on mark, but we still have all the summer paychecks to, to expense out and a lot of the student travel from the end of the year, so I expect that to go down a little bit more. Um, I don't think we had anything really, um, significant that we, you know, had questions about as far as the committee went today.
And the other attachments we'll, uh, address during our consent agenda for the most part, I think?
Yes.
Very well. Any other updates for the, the board? Questions from the board to Mrs. McCain?
I have two, it's just because I'm a rookie. Um, so I saw on the checks that go out, I may be wrong, um, there was a check to Guadalupa Monastery School and a check to Aldo Leopold.
I can explain the, um, the Aldo Leopold one.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I can explain the other one.
Okay.
We're good.
I'm not thinking it's cool, I just.
Okay. Aldo Leopold. When we were going out for, um, reelection for the HB thirty-three, um, one of the provisions for the charter schools is that they have to write a letter stating that they are interested in receiving a portion of the HB thirty-three funds and they should also participate in the election process. Well, there was a bit of a mix-up in, um, when the letter was received here at Central Office, it did not get, um, forwarded to the public ed department where they would act on, um, divvying up the HB thirty-three funds based on the, the ad valorem taxes that we, the property taxes that we receive monthly. And so I, I called Antonio Ortiz, who's in charge of the capital outlay department and the, the public ed department and asked him, you know, okay, so it, they, the people who got the letter didn't do what they were supposed to do. What do we do now? And he said, well, you can wait for Aldo to sue you because you didn't show our due diligence in, in follow-through. Or we can do the honorable thing and give them their portion of it. And it's based on the forty-day student count. And so what I've done is I looked at our revenues from July through March of this year and, um, figured out what, what the allocation would have been for Aldo Leopold. And I sent them that check and then we will look at the subsequent, um, revenues that we receive for, um, April, May and June. And then once we have those revenues in hand, we will give them the additional amount that we owe them for that. And we're gonna do that for the next six years because that's how they.
That's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then the other one?
The other one is anytime that a district receives federal funds, we have to, um, provide services or equitable services to the private schools. So special ed is one of them. It could be speech, it could be OT, it could be anything that they, that the student needs. Sometimes we have the students come into our school to be serviced by teachers, but we also have what we call Title One and Title Two. Um, it's based on the number of free and reduced, uh, eligible kids at the private schools. We have to allocate a certain amount of money based on their student population. And the only way that they can use it is by using it through the criteria that is set by the federal government. And so in this case, um, the teachers and staff at Monastery went to, um, professional development activities and they pay for it and then they put in a reimbursement to us. And then we go ahead and reimburse based on if they fit the criteria.
So they don't have the opportunity to sign up for that?
Pardon?
So they don't have the opportunity? It's not recognized as a separate branch, so we basically have to divvy that up on our, is what you're saying?
It has to go through the public school.
Okay. And then one more, the school specialty of Chicago?
Those are, it's a school supply, um.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to mention.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Thank you, Mrs. Mylum and Mrs. McCain. Next on our agenda this evening is the Board of Education and, uh, first up is the Finance Subcommittee Report.
So I think we went over everything I was gonna mention. Uh, we said at three point eight-five percent of our budget. Um, Michelle had early projected that would be close to three percent, so I think once all the dust settles, that's about where we'll be sitting. The state likes to see two percent, four percent, I'm sorry. So we're below that, but not where we have no cash reserves and we're not in the red. Um, and being that we are a hundred, or one million dollar less funding, right at seven hundred fifty, eight hundred thousand, um, I think we've done really well physically. F-I-S-C-A-L-L-Y. Um, and then the, the other thing that we went over were, were those checks. I thought it was interesting that, um, we wrote Aldo a check for three, thirty-one thousand, but that's being a good neighbor, so I commend our school district for just doing what was right.
Any questions from the board on, uh, for the Finance Subcommittee? Thank you. Very, next on our agenda is Safety and Security, Safety Report. Next on our agenda is Safety and Security Subcommittee Report.
Mr. Ward covered everything in the last committee we had. It was a pretty quiet meeting. And we just want all these projects to get done, or at least started during the summer. And that's all we covered in our last committee meeting.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Where do we stand with security personnel at each site? Armed?
Mrs. McCain has her hand up for...
In our tentative budget, we have three additional armed security guards get open to be... They're budgeted in for them. We have not started the hiring process, but they are in budget.
So that would be a total of five funded.
Because we have the two at the high school currently.
Okay. And would the two currently...
They would start...
Locate... They would start to carry?
Yes. Every security guard would be armed, once we get them all in place.
Okay. Does the budget include the training, or are those separate?
We're gonna squeeze it in there some.
Okay.
So in that next year's budget, there's, I guess, maybe an earmark for five armed security guards?
Yes.
At this point?
Yes.
One thing that I would like to add is that I emailed Mr. Brown and the board some correspondence that I had from an individual at Palmsland Associate that had initially emailed Mrs. McCain. I don't know, it was this afternoon. But talking about the process of the school district, the process needed, that we would need to take to hire an armed security guard. And we talked about getting the letters from the law enforcement agencies, and I believe have we gotten one of those from Silver City Police?
We got one from the city, and I got one from the Sheriff's Department.
And from the sheriff?
Yes.
So I think having those... And so we follow the best practices that they've outlined. You know, we've visited with our local law enforcement. They're unable to provide us the armed security, even if we provide, you know, fifty percent of the salary or kicking with salary. That's not an option to us. So the next option was looking at contracting out for private security. There's no such private security in this area. So the last option that is outlined in their best practices is hiring an armed employee for the district. And to do that, there's several policies and other steps that we need to take. And that's something that was addressed in this email. I believe the gentleman's name is Jim or James...
Buddy.
...Vaudier. And... Because he spoke about, in one of his emails, about a resolution he was needing from the school board and additional communications that... He says that actually isn't... Wouldn't be required as long as we had a letter from the district stating that we follow the best practices, include that documentation from the law enforcement agencies, and then also provide policies and procedures that we would need to develop and implement to start that process of hiring armed security. So certainly nothing that I, or I think the board as a whole, wants to spend a lot of time and money on, but with the state of school shooting, something that we need to strongly consider. So I would just ask the board to please review that email and correspond with me. And if you've got questions, or Mr. Brown, so we can continue with that process. Any other questions, or questions from the board to Mr. Flores on Safety and Security?
I actually just have a comment. I had a constituent approach me yesterday, Sunday, and just really commended our board for taking the lead among school districts in arming security guards. And furthermore, because I said, "We'd love to come up with a way to fund it," he said that he would be willing to donate to the school district to help in that cause. So there are people out there that feel as strongly as we do.
Any other comments or questions? Very well. Next on our agenda is the Board President. And what I have is our second reading of proposed revisions to Policy B-1700-BEDB, Public Comments. We looked at this policy last month so we can... Because currently, our public comment policy is split into two sections. There's a limited... On our agenda, there's a limited public comment, which we are operating under this evening. And then there was an open public comment, both, at this point, were fifteen minutes in length each. The proposed change was to make both, in that agenda policy, to make both public comment sections open. And I believe to also change the first public comment to, from fifteen minutes to twenty minutes, and the second public comment, reduce it by five minutes, so it'd be ten minutes. So we still have the same amount of time for public comment, but we don't restrict the public comment with that limited public comment at the beginning of the meeting, or it's not really the beginning, but probably the middle of the meeting. It's not limited to agenda items. It will be open. So that's what I have as a second reading this evening for approval later in our individual action items. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, we'll move on on our agenda. Next is Board of Education comments. And I'll begin with my comments. As everybody's aware, our school year is wrapping up. We've had... Testing is wrapping up. End of the year, one more week, four days, three and a half, if, for those that are counting. We've had, I think, a very successful spring sports semester. We would like to note our Silver High softball team had eight straight state titles. So I think that's an astounding accomplishment, and kudos to them and their staff for that accomplishment. Also, we had graduation this last Friday, and it was quite a flurry of graduations. It's probably my favorite time as a board member, to sit there and listen to the speeches, listen to the speakers, kind of get re-energized after hearing those and seeing all the graduates celebrate. It's an enjoyable time as a board member. I would say that, you know, if we do the same day in the future, that we give us a little bit more time if we're gonna do them all on the same day. And we probably need a little more warmth as well. That Silver High graduation got a little bit cool as the night went on. But overall, I think, very successful graduations, and congratulations to all the graduates and their families. And I think that's all my comments at this point. Is it Montenegro?
I would echo Mike in saying that last week was nothing short of amazing to watch so many kids finish their path. We brought back Baccalaureate at Silver High School. It was encouraging. It was neat. I don't think we've had it in the Silver Schools since the early nineteen ninety's, which is exciting. We want to expand it to include Cliff, and Aldo, and OHS, and Cobre even, for future years, which is in the works. I want to commend Mr. Coker. I think he's gone. He went out on a limb and did a whole bunch of things different to make this year at Silver High, the end of the year for the 2018 graduates, extra special. And I felt like he was successful at that. And then the seniors sponsors, Ann McMillan and Mr. Minus. I don't remember his first name, but they have done...
Juan Carlos.
Juan Carlos has done amazing things for this year. So kudos to all the teachers out there. I mean, if I'm tired, I can only imagine how you guys feel right now, because you've been doing it all year long. So thank you for sticking in there with our students, and we wish you rest and recuperation and ready for August when it comes. So have a great summer.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
I just want to reiterate with Ashley's about Silver High's graduation, also Opportunity High and Cliff always do... They always do an amazing job. It's always a... Just I get teary-eyed, and my kids aren't even graduating. I just go home and hug each one because it's... Time goes by so fast. But I wanted to congratulate all the organizations, activities, sports, on a good year. I also wanted just to honor the memory of Betsy Willis-Evett. She was one fine educator. When I started Great School, she was the principal. I really looked up to her, and it was a little sad to see her passing by surprise. That's pretty much all that I have.
Thank you. Dr. Dees?
I just wanted to, first of all, commend the OHS community for coming in to advocate as young adults. I think Ms. Bustillo's hit the nail on the head, and I think it's important that you advocate for things that you believe in. So I really appreciate you taking the time, because we all know this is a long meeting. So thank you, guys, for coming and coming with ideas. And I wanted to thank, you know, all the staff there. I want to commend the kids and the teachers, because the year tends to drag out once you hit spring break. It's testing, 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 and, oh, we have another test for you. And that's not the choice of the teachers or the students. And so I appreciate you guys hanging in there. I know my kids are definitely tired of testing and ready for some summer fun. So thank you, guys, for pushing through. I really appreciate it. And I've definitely seen here at the end, our teachers continuing to say, you know, we have more valuable days, more learning to be done, more learning. And so that's really hard in the setting, in the time right now, like I said, where there's a lot of testing. So thank you, guys, for pushing to make our kids better, all the way to the very, very end. Graduation, it was my first opportunity to be a part of the OHS and the Cliff graduations. And it was very, very... They were very intimate settings and very touching and inspiring, actually. It kind of brings us back to the table with a fresh head and a fresh outlook to kind of get back to the basics and what this is all about. So that was nice. And Silver High definitely did some different things. I've been to one or two. And it was really... They were just all very nice ceremonies and a celebration of the kiddos, which is why we're here. So thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, very much, and I hope you have a great summer. And just come back and buy in with new ideas and solutions. That's what we're trying to be about this year.
Thank you. Mr. Flores?
Congratulations to everybody. Graduates, state champions. I echo everybody's comments on here. Please pardon my voice. I coached my girl's softball team, so it gets worse and worse every game. I just want to thank all the teachers, all the coaches, all the administrators, office staff. They put in countless hours, and I know everybody's ready for summer. And it takes a special calling to be a teacher. And from a parent's perspective, I thank each and every one of you guys out there, and the coaches, because coaches spend a lot of hours that they don't get paid for. And we have such a good athletic program here at Silver Schools. And it's a testament to all the coaches, assistant coaches, parents, the student athletes. It's hard being a student athlete, going from practice to homework, going on trips, coming back to get their homework. But now it's time for summer, and everybody enjoy their summer and come back well rested. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is limited public comment. And I've got at least fifteen requests to speak. If there's more out there. Limited public comment is restricted to agenda items, at least through this evening's meeting. So if you've got a request, please give it to Mrs. Hernandez, and we'll put you in. We want to hear from everybody, because we are... Do have some time limitations with... I've got at least fifteen here so far. And I think most of them relating to OHS, which is on our agenda. So if we could... I'll call folks up. If you'll just introduce yourself. And we'll limit the times to about a minute per person. We'll have Mrs. Montenegro will help with the timing. If you could please be respectful of everybody's time. And we do want to hear from everybody. If you can, please try and limit it to about a minute time. So the first request that I have is from Thomas Laws. Mr. Laws?
Mr. President, board members, I come to you with an apology. And it comes from years ago, when I was a president and a member of this board. We voted to put in the SHOS thing. And at the time, we did it with the understanding that it would be done, and it would only be continued if it continued not to the detriment of other students. It didn't work out that way. I mean, the numbers are clear. Also, in terms of facility costs, you know, we've had to pour a lot of money into that. We tried to do it at that time, and I come to you with one recommendation. Try to not do what we did. Burden future boards with your decision. So, you know, I'm sorry you're in this position. It's a bad deal, and I take... I'll take my one-fifth responsibility for it. And I'm done in a minute.
Thank you. Next, a request from Madeline Alfaro. Miss Alfaro, welcome.
Hello, President, members of the board. My name is Madeline Alfaro. I'm a community member that was involved with OHS. I gave you pamphlets. The OHS students worked on these to prevent illegal dumping in the town. It was a grant from the town to pick up and locate illegal dumping locations. Students from OHS are also gonna spend parts of their summer on their own time providing a media campaign for the town through our radios and newspapers. I'd like to just say that OHS serves an at-risk population. And from the presentation we received earlier, that's some... One of the positive parts of that presentation, that adjustment for at-risk students. That was one of the parts where it was, we actually increase next year versus lose money. And I'd just like to say that you'll hear from the students, and a lot of those at-risk students are not... Are going to leave the district because of this decision. And I encourage you to reconsider your decision of closing OHS tonight because of how positive that was. So thank you.
Thank you. The next request I have is for... Welcome, Mrs. Huerta.
Hi. My name is Lorena Huerta. I recently dropped out of the New Mexico Youth Challenge Academy, and I believe OHS should stay open to our community because they give the kids a second chance to give their education that other schools wouldn't. OHS gives their students academic excellence, life coping skills, and service to the community so they can succeed in their goals of life.
Thank you. The next request that I have is from Renee Hyde. Welcome, Miss Hyde.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. I come to you as an emotional parent and an alumni of OHS. Twenty-five years ago, I was basically shunned because I was pregnant and married, and I went to the high school, and the counselor basically told me, "We are a round hole, and you're a square peg, and you don't fit. Please go to OHS." And I went, and I was kind of broken. I felt broken. And I graduated. And I raised three beautiful girls. This was the first year that my daughter went to Silver City Schools. All of my kids graduated. Both my kids graduated from Cobre. I thought, great, this is an opportunity. She has a child. This has helped her. She's almost ready to graduate, and she's a junior. If this campus gets moved from over here to the high school, there's a possibility that there will be a stigma placed on these students of how... Because I've heard it... Because I've heard it from other students. It's just, it's unfortunate. Please, I don't envy you. Please change your vote.
Thank you. The next request that I have is from Jeannie Johnston. Welcome, Ms. Johnston.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Jeannie Johnston. I'm the grads director, statewide director. I first want to say thank you for letting us have a grads program here at Opportunity. It's one of the best programs in the state and you guys do a great job at Opportunity High School. You have amazing students and teachers. As a matter of fact, during the sixteen-seventeen school year, 100% of the grads students graduated, which is remarkable. I just want to be real quick here and say that I realize budgets tie across the state. Our district lost two hundred students itself. I ask for your consideration in keeping Opportunity High School open as it has been instrumental in the success of many young parents. And the decision is made to move the school, that you would consider keeping grads program at Silver High School, making sure that the young parents get the services they need to succeed. The principals had some great ideas, talking about keeping the programs. And know that we're willing to help if you guys do go to Silver City High School. The grads are obviously willing to help. I know our funding this year is pretty small, but next year we'll apply for federal funding. So we're hoping to get backed up, you know, 20,000 to give you guys. So just know that we're willing to help make sure that teen parents get what they need to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request that I have is from Kristen Powell. Welcome, Mrs. Powell. Ms. Powell?
I am a 2014 graduate of OHS. And I came today to tell you that I was a teen parent and I could not continue to go to Silver High School because I felt that, you know, like it was just really tough to be pregnant and stared at. And OHS welcomed me in as a family and I did graduate. My daughter is going to pre-K or kindergarten this year. So I would really like you to reconsider not closing OHS on behalf of, you know, the teen parents that feel, you know, maybe they don't have anywhere else to go because OHS does welcome teen parents and at-risk students like family. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next request I have is from Bianca Duarte. Welcome, Ms. Duarte.
Thank you. Hello, board. My name is Bianca Duarte. I am a class graduate of 2014 as well. And because of OHS, I just want to say that they gave me another opportunity to find who I wanted to be. I was lacking 13 credits at Silver High and yes, it was by my choice. And when I went to OHS to get accepted there, they accepted me and as a family member as well. And I just hope you guys reconsider to kids that feel that they are troubled or have at-home problems or as well teen parents of regular high school area, if they feel it's not their place to be. OHS was what helped me and they pushed me. And I want to say thank you to the staff that showed me their dedication and motivation to help me get to where I needed to be in life. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request I have is from Selena Vihill. Welcome, Ms. Vihill.
Hi. I want to start by saying I love you guys. You're awesome. I graduated from OHS in 2015. Middle school was not good for me. I was always suspended, in trouble. I lasted one week at Silver High. And for the way I was in middle school and at high school, they talked to the principal and told him not to accept me in because of the way I was, like not to give me a chance. Mr. Koger still accepted me in. He gave me a clean start. He treated me good, respected me. And honestly, I didn't think I was going to graduate. I didn't think I was going to finish school or anything. If it wasn't for them, I wouldn't have got it done. They pushed me. They supported me. They helped me. They helped all of us. One thing I like about them is if you don't understand something, they'll help you. They'll go over it, over it, just so you could understand. If we needed to after school, they would stay extra hours just to help us. And I just want to say, don't shut this school down. I mean, Silver High is for everyone. And I love you guys and I'm sorry that this is happening.
Thank you. The next request I have is from Amanda Maldonado. Welcome, Ms. Maldonado.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Amanda Maldonado. I went to OHS and graduated in 2015. I honestly don't know where I'd be if OHS wasn't a school. I believe I would have dropped out of high school due to I was always afraid to ask for help and afraid to be in a big crowd. But at OHS, it was a small building with a good amount of people. The teachers never made me feel afraid to ask for help. And when I would be struggling, the teachers were there to help me, even when I couldn't ask for the help. I never went to Silver High, but I don't regret it because OHS is like family, not just an education family, but more than that. And I thank you guys so much.
Thank you. The next request I have is from Sista Luna. Welcome, Ms. Luna.
So, before OHS, I had really bad, like I struggled in school. Not like I always got A's and stuff, but I got bullied a lot and I had really bad anxiety. Before OHS, I ended up dropping out during my middle school year. And so I had no credits and I didn't think I was going to be able to go back to school and finish everything. I managed to catch up in these past two years and I only need three and a half core credits left to like graduate. And I understand there is a budgeting problem. But I ask you guys to please rethink your decision and find another option. I don't plan on going to Silver. I really don't want to. I, I don't know. It's just sad. And I ask you guys to please rethink your decision. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next request I have is from Stephanie Tedford. Welcome, Ms. Tedford.
Good evening. I'm a staff member, Stephanie Tedford at Opportunity High School. Thanks for taking the time to divide it all up so we all have a chance to be heard. A couple of things I wanted to stand before you is if you have any questions, please ask. Like, we're all here. I think that's been part of, one of the big issues is there's been a lot of misinformation and a lot of clarity with what's going on. We have instructional coaches that are supposed to be in our classrooms. And if you really wanted some eyes and ears on what was going on, you know, from the bottom up, top down, all around. There's a lot of support in place for, in the district. And I commend the district and the board for making sure these policies, procedures, personnel in place. Use them, okay, before, and inform yourselves as a board to use those supports and those resources to make your decision. Something that wasn't portrayed quite right, and I presented this in the budget, is we've had 95 students enrolled in our school just this year alone. Fifty-four of those students are not even from our district, okay? So we are the flame that the moths come to. So just understand that. And not all of them are at risk. And I'm going to throw a shout-out to Mr. Staley's shout-out. He's my brother. He was willing to send his two daughters to our program as well, so, for whatever that's worth.
Thank you. The next request I have is from Anaya Narvise. Is that, am I getting that first name correct? Ms. Narvise, welcome.
My name's Ayanna Navadis and I'm a junior at OHS High School. My freshman year at Silver High was pretty horrible. I was socially and physically abused. One day at school, someone cut my hair. I didn't tell anyone because I didn't want to bother anyone. But my sophomore year, I cried because I did not want to go back to Silver High. My sophomore year, I went to OHS and they welcomed me with open arms. They made me feel safe. They made me feel like I was important. With Silver High, I never got the feeling that I was important. With OHS, I always felt like I was one of their top priorities and that I was me again. I wasn't this shy, scared girl, but I blossomed. So I would like you to keep OHS open, just for the fact for kids like me who feel like they have nowhere else to go. So they feel safe.
Thank you. The next request that I have is from Asia Landon. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Asia Landon. I've been here before, obviously, speaking to you guys. I'm a welder at Western. OHS welcomed me when I was 15 years old. I was pregnant. And they've been my family ever since. They're really great people. I ask you to reconsider because they are my family, like, I know I graduated already, but... They're, they're awesome. And they helped me through all my challenges and struggles as a teen parent. And if you don't do it for me, do it for my daughter because she has a graduated mother now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request I have is from Leanne Cook. Leanne Cook. The next request I have is from Kai Arroyo. Welcome.
Hello, I'm a 2018 graduate. I graduated this year about this time, a few months before, about like in 2017. I was thinking about dropping out from school completely because I went to Silver High School and I felt like I wasn't important also. And so, I don't know, I tried talking to the principals. They tried helping me, but they didn't help me enough like OHS has. I've, you know, argued with the teachers. Like I had really bad anxiety over at Silver High School. And then, right before break, I went over to OHS to put in my application. They accepted me right as soon as we're done break. So I went to the school there for half a semester. No, for half a, for whatever, the second term I went there. And so, when I went there, they opened math. Math is my worst subject ever. So them being able to help me out from D's, F's to A's and B's this year is crazy for me to say because I never thought I'd graduate in time. And like, the school is family. Other, instead of teachers and students like at Silver High, they're committed to what they are doing over there. So I ask you to please keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request I have is from Gilbert Madrid. Welcome.
Hi, fellow members. My name is Gilbert Madrid. I graduated, oh, sorry, in 2017, you know. I never felt better in my life when I went to OHS. You know, they opened up the doors to me, you know, and I felt scared because like, oh gosh, here comes another school year, a different new school. You know, I went to the Silver High School. It wasn't easy, you know. And I feel how these kids feel about bullying and, you know, being tortured. I was never bullied. I was morally bullied by the teachers. But, you know, it took a while for me, you know, not to say nothing because that's where I was raised, not to say nothing unless you really need to. You know, then like right now, this is a time for me to say something. That OHS is not just a school where, you know, kids go to get away from things from the high school. It's a school, it's a name, Opportunity. It's the reason why it's Opportunity is to give kids an opportunity to finish school and, you know, graduate and, you know, not drop out because, you know, they have good teachers here that helped me. And, you know, that helped me, you know, to not be afraid to ask questions or, you know, to not feel left out because, you know, you have a kid in high school. Or, you know, feel yourself as a human being. And, you know, I don't think it's right to, you know, take away a school where kids need to go and get an education. And also where teachers need to, you know, teach, you know, kids to be a future for generations and generations. You know, I'm watching on the news of schools getting shooting, you know, teachers going, walking out. And, you know, it makes me kind of feel left out because I wish I was there joining them. And now I'm joining them now that hoping that, you know, you guys would consider keeping this school open for, you know, kids that felt left out or, you know, that felt like they're nobody, but they are when they go to this school. Like they said, it's a big family. And I would hate to see a family being, you know, getting broken up because of money signs or, you know, budgets or where are you guys going to move the school? It's, you know, it's perfect where it's at now. And, you know, I enjoyed it. That was the best time.
Mr. Madrid, please wrap up your comments.
And so, you know, it just, I just hope that you guys reconsider not closing it, but keep it and open for future generations. And that's all I can say.
Thank you. The next request I have is from Dominique Duarte. Welcome.
Hi, board. You've heard a lot of students, high school students, talk about the opportunities that OHS presented them. OHS provided me opportunities as a graduate student. Mr. Ping and Mr. Lamardo both invited me to teach a dual enrollment class within OHS, within the three semesters that I taught there. I taught a College 101 class and a social work, an intro to social work class. And it was an amazing opportunity. So despite the decision that you guys make, I would really recommend that you guys do not limit their opportunities. There is a lot of great changes happening at WNMU where we do want to make sure that they have those dual enrollment opportunities. So please reach out. You have a fellow colleague within the Student Affairs Department on the board. We are doing, revamping our Center for Student Success. We are revamping our dual enrollment component. So regardless of what happens, do not limit their opportunity. And please continue to provide them with opportunity to take in college classes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request I have is from Howie Morales. Mr. Morales?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Mr. Brown, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I know the sacrifices that each of you make and I see this on a daily basis. As a matter of fact, I came from a coach pitch game where Mrs. Diaz, or Board Member Diaz, is missing the game to be here. So I know the work that you're doing is important. And I know that the decisions that have to be made are things that you don't want to have to address. But I come here today not as a state senator, not as a candidate for Lieutenant Governor. I come here as a former teacher of, at the time was SHOS, now Opportunity High School. And it concerned me when I look at the daily press and see that options or discussions are going to take place in dealing with the closure, possible closure of Opportunity High School. And I felt that I owed it to my former students and to my former colleagues who taught me so much throughout my time of teaching there to make sure that I can use my voice as a parent and as a former teacher to make sure that you guys consider all options. I don't come in opposition. I come for you to consider that if it's closed, we don't close a school. We're not closing institution. What we're closing is a ministry. And I hope that I can offer some solutions and some things that can be considered because it's budget that's driving this. And I understand the budget issues that we've been dealing with. So when we talk about the budget issues that are out there, a couple of things that I would like to be considered is before this would be made is I've never agreed with the Public Education Department in not giving the district a small-sized school adjustment for alternative schools or schools like Opportunity High School. I think that we can have a different interpretation coming within the next year and I would hope and push that that would be done. I also would like to give opportunities for discussions because when you look at pre-K dollars and what is going to be the benefit of that by utilizing the school as a pre-K center, there is the units that are generated or about over three, three units are generated there for a high school student. It's a little over one unit that's generated. So I understand the dollars that are in place there. But I would give a suggestion as a possibility where you can have a win-win situation, meaning that you can still provide the pre-K services, obtain the benefits from the funding, possibly by utilizing the movement of the kindergarteners back to the elementary schools, moving the sixth graders back to the middle school. That may help in other areas too. And that's just a suggestion because you've seen that we've had to cut electives at the middle school level simply because we don't have enough students. That may be an opportunity to have more electives, more opportunities for those students as well. I personally have liked and really think that Bobby Trujillo has done a great job at Sixth Street as I take my son there to kindergarten and I see the benefits. If the district would choose not to move the kindergarteners back, we can always have the possibility. we can always have the possibility of moving sixth graders back up to La Plata and the possibilities of utilizing the empty space at the elementaries for the pre-K opportunities and you get the funding there. Continue to keep Opportunity High School as a possibility there. So those are just some suggestions that I'm not trying to overstep my boundaries as far as what the role, the budget or the Board has to do in regards to the budget. But I also believe that, strongly believe, that without this program, our community wouldn't be what it is today. I taught students who went to graduate from high school. And because of Opportunity High School, they went on and graduated, went on to get a degree or certification. Today, one of those graduates, his daughter was a New Mexico Player of the Year a few years back for softball in the state of New Mexico. I've had students who have gone on and graduated and become teachers. I've had students who have built houses, who've done things that have graduated from there that have had the opportunities that otherwise wouldn't have been there since 1992. So again, I ask the Board to consider these possible solutions that can bring the financial benefit. It'll change things up a little bit, but at the same time, you're gonna leave an opportunity for the school to be open and to provide the much-needed services for early childhood, the pre-K services that are necessary. So thank you for giving me a little bit more time. I wanted to make sure and get that in. But again, I can't stress enough, we wouldn't close a school, we wouldn't close an institution. We'd be closing a ministry within our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have a request from Linda Marcus. Ms. Marcus, welcome.
Hi, how are you guys doing? Thank you for being here and all your hard work, I appreciate it. Today, I'm here just as a community member, but I did work for New Mexico grads for five years at Opportunity High with teen parents. I was a teen parent and I was forced to drop out of school at Silver High. So during all the talk about, I'm sorry, I'm just recording. During all the talk about the plans for Silver High, I never heard anyone bring up teen parents and how this will affect them. And like Jeannie said, we had a hundred percent graduation rate for our teen parents at Opportunity High. And a lot of that is because our daycare is right behind the school. So the kids can come to school, take their babies to school and, you know, get their education like they deserve. So if any of you were ever teen parents on the Board, you can understand the challenges for teen parents to obtain their education. So I'm just asking you to please reconsider and think about our teen parents. And also, there's not a plan. There's no plan for these kids and they're not throwaway kids. We need a plan. You can't decide to close a school without giving these students a plan. What will we do for them? How will we help them? You know, I did a little research. There's, the total minority is seventy percent at Opportunity High. Total economically disadvantaged is sixty-three percent. So you need to be their voice and I'm asking you to please do that.
Thank you. Next, I have a request from Giselle Moreno. Welcome.
I would really appreciate you guys if you would have closed OHS. It helped me a lot. I've been bullied since my middle school year. La Plata never did anything to help me out. I was always scared to go out and say stuff. My Silver High was really bad. They really wouldn't try with you, they would just care if you were in sports. They're pretty much like almost all related. They just, they wouldn't do anything. I didn't fit in. And when I moved to OHS, I felt like they cared more. They were willing to teach you if, they would find different ways to teach you if you did not understand. I don't think it's right for you guys to close it. You guys really think about the kids who get bullied, who have like, they're just scared to go bigger schools. They just really don't care. I would really appreciate you guys if you don't close it.
Thank you. The next request I have is from Shay Lynn Allison. Welcome.
So I am a 2015 graduate. Thank you, guys. They had taught me more than Silver High ever did. I was behind four and a half credits. I got there right before the school turned into an alternative school. I ended up graduating with a 4.0, all my credits and a scholarship. Ended up having one year free of college. The next year in 2016, I graduated with an associate's degree. If it wasn't for OHS, I wouldn't be where I'm at today. I have a really good job here in Silver. I can afford my house, I pay my bills, I live alone. I can manage my financial needs because of Ms. Moore. If it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be able to manage a checkbook. So with that said, please reconsider. I mean, you're gonna probably be spending more money on the preschool than you are ever with OHS. And, yeah, so hopefully you guys can reconsider that. And OHS is a blessing and it's not just for kids who have learning disabilities. It's more, it's a family. So thank you for that.
Thank you. The last request I have is from Rachel Miller.
Hi, guys. I did beg and bade to speak until I heard what everyone else had to say. Mr. Brown, Board, I am a proud employee, parent and grandparent of Silver Schools. There's a population of students at SHOS that have not been addressed tonight and those are the students that have a severe mental illness. There is a great difference between conduct disorder and mental illness. SHOS has been willing to embrace my grandson, who has a severe mental illness, who coming out of hospital several times over the last two and a half years has had nowhere to go that he could go and he has been welcomed and handled beautifully at SHOS. Unfortunately, he's back in the hospital again now because mental illness does what mental illness does. It cycles. And with adolescents and with all of the things that goes with that, mental illness is maybe low incident, but it's at risk and there are other students over there. The setting is what I'm concerned about. Just going into a larger setting, not because of my grandson, but other students as well. We know mental illness does not get better, but you can mediate a lot of the symptoms based on the setting and the people that work with them. We know that SHOS is going to trigger and exasperate incidents, meltdowns, and an increase in the symptoms of mental illness, not just for my grandson, but for others. So that needs to be considered. The restructuring, the pod, that's all a nice idea, but there are students that will not meet their needs. And right now, as a shout-out to SHOS, they took him from an isolated, single room with one teacher, which was the only setting he could be in. Very quickly, the staff developed a relationship with him. He's been able to be out in the rest of the population, actually gaining credits, and he has gone to school every single day. And that in and of itself speaks volumes. So I want to thank SHOS and ask you to think about all of the students that are in need. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our limited public comment section of our agenda. And I want to thank all of those that submitted and spoke before the Board. I think everybody was very respectful and I do appreciate that and appreciate the time that you've taken to be with us throughout this meeting. So next on our agenda are action items. And the first item is a consent agenda approval of: One, budget finance purchasing. A, financial reports. B, budget adjustment requests. C, award of bids and proposals. And D, donations. E, national history donation request. And F, Skills USA donation request. And lastly, G, conflict of interest disclosures. And I always forget, is transportation included in this?
No.
Separate, okay, thank you. Thank you for reminding me every month. Ms. McCain, do you want to address those items with the Board?
Okay, we'll begin with the total of amount of checks written for the month of April. We are asking for approval of the checks written in the amount of $2,295,014.24. And then, under the budget adjustment requests, we have some late allocations that we received from the Public Ed Department. We have our Carl Perkins Secondary redistribution. We awarded those funds for vocational and technical training. We have a bar for $11,275. We have, we were awarded the Recruitment Support Fund, which is helping, funding for recruiting teachers. We were given $9,467. We have our pre-K initiative that, the pre-K is for next year, for next school year, but they awarded us what they called the startup amount of $60,000. I need to say, all of these funds, we need approval today and we have to use them by June 30th. And so, the pre-K initiative, the Carl Perkins, the recruitment, if we don't use them, they divert back to the state. So we're gonna be running around writing checks as soon as we get approval for it. We have our 31,700 capital improvements. We have a state match amount that we get about this time of the year, every year. It is for SD9 capital purchases. We were awarded $68,131 and we got that just in time. We also got our new school bus, the Silver High Fighting Cult bus. And so we're gonna use that money to offset part of the cost of that bus. I'm asking for a special circumstance on our last award. Our 24106, our Idea B, we usually get our carryover and final award like September, October. They still have not given us the numbers, they're crunching the numbers. I've been emailing the people at the Public Ed Department and they keep asking, you know, saying just, you know, next week, end of next week. This is for special ed. This is the carryover from last year as well as any final allocation that they may give us. Our carryover amount that I went back and looked actually and we have $136,000 that we tentatively will get, are seeking approval for. I don't have the exact number right now because they haven't sent us our award letter. So what I'm asking for you to do is to go ahead and approve it so that we can get the bar in as soon as we get the award letter. And I can let you know what the exact amount is gonna be later. Otherwise, we would have to call for a special meeting just to approve this one bar so that we could get it in the budget for this year. So anyway, all of these funds, with the exclusion of the special ed fund, that money can carry over into next year. So as long as we get it budgeted in and then we'll carry it over because we won't have a lot of time to spend it. But all of the other funds, we have to, as soon as they get approved, we have to spend them this year because they are not carryover funds. But anyway, those are the bars that we are looking, seeking approval for today. And then, we have one RFP and... And a bid, I'm sorry. We have the RFP for our legal services because, as you know, for some reason, we have more and more legal bills. And so, there is a budget limit or a budget limit of $60,000 for small purchases. We are getting well close to that amount for our legal fees. Usually, we don't have to put it out for bid because in years past, we never even came close to that number. But because of circumstances beyond our control, we are hitting that mark and so we have to get approval to continue with our legal services or find a new lawyer based on, you know, what the RFP said. We are with Walsh and Gallegos and by a slim margin of four points, they won the RFP. So we will continue to have them. You guys will see that probably in July, we will do this again for the entire year next year because we're assuming that things will stay on course and we'll probably be looking at legal fees in excess of $60,000. So we'll have to do an RFP then as well. So anyway, we're asking to award the RFP to Walsh and Gallegos this year. And then the other thing that I told you about was Berry is getting the retrofitting of the LED lights. We had companies from here in town and also from California, actually, that responded to our bid. And Clearbit Blue Energy out of San Diego, California, came in with the lowest bid at $204,671. So we are asking to recommend them for approval of the bid so that they can switch out these lights. And I believe that is, let's see, oh, lots and lots of donations, that's a good thing. We have McDonald's. I'm asking for a letter of appreciation to all of these people that donated for the different causes that the different organizations went out and sought help with. We had McDonald's that donated $500 to the Silver High School prom. We had the Silver City Moose Lodge that donated $600 to the youth basketball camp. John and Crystal Kennedy Individuals donated $500 to the National History Day, pardon me. Freeport was, I believe, a grant award. It's the Project Pick Six. And Ben knows what that's about. They awarded $89,000 to Silver Schools. Do you want to tell them a little bit about?
Project Pick Six is a collaborative effort between my, our district and also Cobra is involved as well. It provides, with that money, we provide two days of professional development for teachers this summer with Google certified innovators. We have one day for fifth grades, current fifth grade students, where 100 fifth grade students will get STEM training from those same Google innovators. And then we also, it's buying, purchasing devices for our sixth grade teachers next year so that they'll basically be one-to-one in our district. And we're starting a pilot with early elementary as well to try to help them out with their technology needs. And so that's what that 89,000 is. And there's another 6,000 that went straight to the Grant County because we're helping them beef up their network at the convention center so that we can use it.
Okay, and to continue on the list. We had Wesley and Stephanie Lonsberry who donated $3,200 in memory of Ms. Rosemarie Dralis, who passed away just recently. And so they donated $3,200 to the Dralis Scholarship Fund, which, I mean, it's in excess of $35,000 right now in scholarship monies to give out to our student athletes. We have Arenas Valley Animal Clinic that donated $500 to the National History Day. Town of Silver City donated $5,000 to National History Day. And then, on top of those donations, because so many kids qualified to go to the National History Day competition, we had 15 kids from the Silver High and nine kids from La Plata that qualified. And so they're asking the Board for a little help, assistance in travel expenses. And so I'm asking for a separate award for each of them because they're separate organizations. So they want, you know, our customary award is $1,000 for the student travel and I'd like to see it separated because we do have two separate organizations. We have the La Plata organization and Silver High. So I'm asking for both of them, their help with their student travel. And then as well, we have Skills USA. I received an email from Mr. Arendondo and we have a student, Adrian Melon, who has qualified again to go to Nationals and represent Silver Schools. He has gone and won the last three years. And so they're also seeking assistance for his travel to make it to Nationals. And I'm asking for the $1,000 for him as well. And I don't have any conflict of interest disclosures.
Thank you. Questions from the Board? I have a question on the proposals, on the lighting.
Yes.
The big spread in the three bids that were submitted, any feedback on why that? I mean, and that company that's coming, that had the low bid is actually from out of town, which you would think they would have a higher cost coming in.
They are in the business of retrofitting. They have done 95 school districts already across the United States. And so they're really good. They've learned to contain costs and so that's how they were able to come in. Because we did question it because it was so starkly different.
Right.
But they are all on the same page.
Okay.
And in the event they go over, that's all we're gonna pay them, correct?
There is the possibility of change orders if there's something that's unforeseen. But those would have to be approved.
And then the last budget request, that has to be approved prior to our June meeting?
Well, we would have to have a special meeting. Once I finally get the dollar amount, because I'm supposed to get it maybe late this week, maybe early next week, then we'd have to schedule another Board meeting in order to approve that one bar. And the only thing that's missing is the dollar amount. And the only thing that's missing is the dollar amount, you know, and, you know, we know we're gonna get an award, we just don't know what the exact dollar amount is gonna be. And until we get that letter, we can't put it on the...
Then it's something that can't wait until that, that June meeting?
No, because our deadline for actually doing bars for the Public Ed Department was June first.
Oh, before the, before the new fiscal year?
It's June first for any bars, you know, for this fiscal year, June first is our deadline with Ben.
July first is the new fiscal year, right?
Yeah, fiscal year is July.
July, yeah, June, okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board? On our consent agenda, A, budget finance, financial reports, budget adjustment requests, award of bids and proposals, donations and donation requests. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve our consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? I would also like to thank those individuals and organizations for their donations to these events. Without them, a lot of these opportunities wouldn't be possible, so thank you to those donators again. So, we've got a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes to approve our consent agenda. Next is Transportation under Consent Agenda Item Two.
Mr. President, members of the board, tonight, I'm asking for approval for five, I mean, for four contractors for bus, for transportation for next school year. Sandra Estrada, she's the one who did all of these this year, did them all by herself. I'm very proud of her, trained her well, I guess. Cliff Bus Lines is in the amount of a hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents. Mangus Bus Incorporated, sixty-six thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and forty-two cents. Montoya Transportation, five hundred eighty-two thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-four cents. And Shelley Farms, seventeen thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and twenty-six
Questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve... Excuse me? Should be under C instead. Oh, as an individual? I don't know. Mr. Brown just pointed out that that's under, is that under Item C for an individual?
Yeah.
As opposed to, I guess, Transportation is just bus drivers, activity drivers and feeder routes?
Okay, I'll go back and see, I don't have anything...
Okay.
Standby.
Very well, so nothing, nothing under Consent Agenda for Transportation. So, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is B, Consideration and Approval of Revisions to the Policy B dash one seven zero zero B E D B, Public Comments. And again, as I presented the second reading to the board earlier tonight, that would eliminate the limited restriction on our open public, or on our public comments on that first period. It would extend that public comment by five minutes and so, both our public comments would be open and not, we wouldn't have any limitation. I will entertain a motion to approve that second reading and revision to adopt the Policy B dash one seven zero zero B E D B, Public Comment.
So moved.
Got a motion and do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Item B, Consideration and Approval to our Public Comments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes and we've revised our public comments. Thank you. Now, next is Item C, Consideration and Approval of Bus Contracts for the 2018-19 School Year. Mrs. Milam.
I'm asking for approval for the four bus contractors, as previously presented.
As presented. Any questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion to approve Item C, Consideration and Approval of Bus Contracts for the 2018-19 School Year, which include the Cliff Bus Lines, the Mangus Bus Incorporated, Montoya Transportation and Shelley Farms.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, so the motion passes. Thank you. Next is Item D, Consideration and Approval of Authorizing, Authorization and Delegating Resolution, including the form of preliminary official statement for the Silver Consolidated School District Number One, General Obligation School Building Bond Series 2018 in the amount of five million dollars.
President McMillan, members of the board, pleasure to see you again. You'll recall, we worked with you last year on the issuance of the 2017 series. I'm Luis Carrasco with the Rhodey Law Firm in Albuquerque, the district's bond and disclosure council. And I have with me your financial advisor, I'll let her introduce herself.
I'm Lale Diani with Hilltop Securities, pleasure to be here, thank you.
As I was saying, we worked with you in the same capacity last year. I've seen at least three familiar faces, two new ones, looking forward to working with you. And I'll give, I'll give them the same speech that I gave you last year. Full disclosure, I'm a nineteen ninety-seven graduate of Cobra High School, but as your lawyer, my loyalties obviously run to the Silver Consolidated School District, so no worries there. And I have, you have before you this very slim and streamlined resolution, it's only about fifty pages, that describes and details the proposed issuance of the five million dollar bonds, Series 2018A. In light of the lengthy comments that we had this meeting, I'll try to be as efficient and quick as possible, but if you have any questions, please stop me, I'm happy to answer any of those. So, the resolution opens with a very lengthy title. I tried to get as much of the substance in there so that somebody reviewing this could get a good sense of what this resolution actually accomplishes. And there's several recital paragraphs that give a history of the district's borrowing. You'll recall that in 2017, there was an election that went to the voters, asking them for authority to issue up to twenty million dollars of general obligation bonds. And last year, we issued five million. We're here before you with another five million this year and we anticipate in the next couple of years, five more, two more increments of five million dollars each until you get up to that capacity. Like last year, there was an RFQ issued to determine who the, this is a negotiated sale bond, so it's not a public sale. And the, Robert W. Baird was the purchaser last year, they were the successful purchaser this time around. So, hopefully, that will present with it some efficiencies and familiarity in the transaction. The resolution, in the whereas, going back to the whereas's, there was a significant change in the Supplemental Securities Act enacted in the 2017 legislature. You might recall that when we were here last year, I had you adopt a similar resolution at one meeting and then I came to you at a subsequent meeting, asking you to approve the final terms of the sale once we did that. The legislature changed the law last year to allow you to delegate the responsibility for, for reaching the final terms of the sales to anybody that you wanted, member of your staff. So, we have some proposals for you on that. But essentially, I won't have to come to you, once you adopt this, this is a done deal. You give certain, you give that authority to make those final term calls to the designated officers that are defined in this resolution. Specifically, the legislature has authorized you to delegate the authority to determine any or all of the following terms of the bonds, the interest and principal payment dates, the principal amounts, the sale prices, the interest rates, the interest payment periods, the redemption and tender provisions, the procurement of municipal bond insurance and any related covenants or agreements, the creation of any capitalized interest or debt service reserve funds, including the size and funding of the funds, the amount of the underwriting discount, if any, the final terms of the agreements, if any, with one or more trustee, paying agent, registrar, dissemination agent, or any other service provider required for the purchase, sale, issuance and delivery of the bonds, to make any changes with respect thereto from those terms which were before the board at the time of adoption of this resolution, provided that such terms do not exceed the parameters set forth, such terms in the authorizing and delegating resolution. So, along with that new authority that the legislature gave you in 2017, they also gave you the responsibility of designating the parameters of the bonds. And so, that's one of the major accomplishments of this resolution. Also, you'll set certain parameters about how far your designated officers can go in terms of issuance, interest rates and so forth. The introductory clauses also describe the preliminary official statement, which Ms. Diani and I will address later, the continuing disclosure agreement, undertaking agreements, the publication of the notice of adoption and thirty-day limitation of action period. But getting to the substance of the resolution now, we'll start off going section by section. So, Section One just provides definition for defined terms that you'll see repeated throughout the resolution, nothing, nothing groundbreaking there, standard stuff. Section Two, you ratify all prior action taken by staff and board and your agents towards the issuance of the Series 2018 bonds. Section Three, you make certain findings related to the issuance of the bonds, including the finding that the issuance of the bonds are necessary, that the bonds are subject to the parameters stated in this resolution and the final term certificate, we'll get into that in just a bit also, and that the project and the method of financing are authorized, including the negotiated sale to Robert W. Baird, the purchaser in this instance. Section Four talks about that new delegation authority that you have. And so, we have set the delegation up such that you are basically exercising the maximum delegation authority that you have. Everything that you could delegate under the law, we've set it up so that you are delegating that to the designated officers. And then, the second part of Section Four sets forth the parameters. And this is the important piece here. And so, the parameter set up the maximum aggregate principal amount of bonds to be five million dollars. That, number two, sets forth that the bonds may mature in serial or term maturities with the last such maturity no longer than August first, 2038. That's the longest you can go under this particular legal authority for bond issuance. The true interest cost on the bonds shall not exceed five percent per annum and the maximum coupon shall not exceed a fixed interest rate of five percent per annum. Fourth, the bonds will be secured by general ad valorem taxes levied on all taxable property within the district without limit as to rate or amount. The fifth parameter sets forth that the bond shall be sold in a negotiated sale to the purchaser, which I've said earlier, is Robert W. Baird and Company in this instance, within the parameters established in this authorizing and delegating resolution pursuant to a bond purchase agreement, which will be one of the documents that we execute, memorializing their agreement to purchase the bonds and the terms for the purchase. Sixthly, the net original discount, if any, shall not exceed two percent of the aggregate principal amount of the bonds on an aggregate basis. Seventhly, the underwriting discount shall not exceed one and a half percent of the aggregate principal amount of the bonds. Eighthly, the form of the bond shall be substantially the form given in Section Eleven of the authorizing and delegating resolution, I'll talk about that in a few minutes. You may recall that B O K F N A was appointed the registrar and paying agent for the Series 2017 bonds. We're proposing that you stay with them. It wouldn't make a whole lot of sense to go with a different registered paying agent this time around, so we didn't hear any objection from members of the staff, so we're just proposing to keep the status quo on that front in this instance. The bonds shall be dated as determined, determined by the designated officers as evidenced by the final term certificate. And the bonds shall be issued only as fully registered bonds in authorized denominations subject to the book entry system. The bonds will be issued in one or more series and shall consist of bonds numbered consecutively from R one upward, provided that no individual bond will be issued for more than one maturity or as otherwise requested by the purchaser. And the bonds are subject to optional prior redemption and/or mandatory sinking fund redemption prior to their stated maturities upon the terms and conditions determined by the designated officers as set forth in the final term certificate. So, that was a mouthful. And I took care to go through each of those items because I thought it was important to make sure that we were meeting all of the requirements that the legislature has placed upon you when exercising this delegated authority. And so, I fully briefed you on those items and you know the bounds of the parameters that you've set. Okay. Subsection C under, you're approving the form of the bonds as supplemented by, in the final term certificate. As I said, I'll talk about the final term certificate in just a bit. The interest rate is not to exceed ten percent. That may seem like it conflicts with what I just said about the maximum five interest rate. This addresses two different legal requirements. So, the delegated, the five percent limitation on interest talks to the parameters that you're setting and you're telling your designated officers that you don't want to go any higher than five percent. The ten percent requirement speaks to a state law requirement where you could go up to ten percent legally if you wanted to, but in this current market environment, we think five percent leeway is going to be more than, more than enough. The bonds will be payable semi-annually, or the interest on the bonds is payable semi-annually on February first and August first, beginning August first, 2019. Subsection E is a description of payment of interest. So, if you have interest in knowing the nitty-gritty about how interest is paid and the mechanics about that, you can refer to that section. Section F talks about the mechanics and the notice required for redeeming bonds. So, if in the future, you decide that it would be advantageous to pay off these, issue additional debt to pay off these bonds, perhaps you'll get a lower interest rate or something. This provides the mechanism about how you go about achieving that. All right, in Section Five, you are designating the president of the board or the vice president to execute and deliver the bonds attested by the secretary. So, you might recall, Board Member Montenegro, last year, you got to have the privilege of signing all of those bonds. It'll be Ms. Diaz this year, so I'll get to chase you around and get your signatures on all of those documents.
Hopefully, you won't be in Red River, New Mexico.
Yeah, it was just a special trip to Taos, no big deal. All right. And then, in Section Six, just specifying that these are general obligations payable from ad valorem taxes and to which the full faith and credit of the district is pledged to payment and interest thereof. Section Seven, some minutia about facsimile or manual signatures and authentication by the authorized officers and the registrar paying agent. Section Eight deals with the registration books kept by the registrar paying agent and the process for transfers and exchanges of bonds, including if the bond should get lost or stolen or mutilated in some respect. Those are just directions to your registrar paying agent about what to do in those situations. Skipping onto Section Nine, these describe the provisions for appointment of a successor registrar or paying agent should B O K F resign or become incapable of fulfilling its role. Section Ten speaks to the fact that the bonds are fully negotiable with all qualities of negotiable paper, subject to registration provisions, and that the owners have all rights enjoyed by holders of negotiated instruments under the Uniform Commercial Code. Section Eleven is the form of the bonds. So, this shows you exactly what the bonds will look like once they are executed and signed, if you have any interest in seeing that. But they memorialize all of the terms that I'm going over with you at this point in one distinct document. All right, going on to Section Twelve, I think we're almost done. The bonds, this describes the fact that the bonds are to be delivered to the purchaser once duly executed and authenticated and the bond proceeds are to be applied only towards the purposes specified in the resolution. And I may have skipped over that, so I'll just go over with you what purposes these bonds are being issued for. And so, you are authorizing the issuance of these bonds for the purposes of erecting, remodeling, making additions to and furnishing school buildings, to purchase or improve school grounds, purchase computer software and hardware for student use in public schools, and to provide matching funds for capital outlay projects funded pursuant to the Public School Capital Outlay Act or any combination of those purposes. Section Thirteen describes the imposition of direct and... Section 13 describes the imposition of direct annual ad valorem taxes on all taxable property within the district sufficient to pay principal of and interest on the bonds. This resolution serves as the certificate to the county commission as to the amount of taxes necessary to be levied for purposes stated in the resolution, and that taxes collected to be kept in interest and seeking funds for the district's GO bonds. All right, subsection B talks about the process for triggering payment guaranteed through DFA. You may be aware that the state of New Mexico guarantees payment on the bonds, so if the district for some reason should not be able to make payment or interest funds, the DFA will step in and make those payments on your behalf, and so this memorializes the procedures and how that's accomplished. Section 14 is the approval of the form of the preliminary official statement and the publication thereof, and the authorization of its use and distribution in connection with the sale of the bonds. And I'll ask your financial advisor to provide some detail on the preliminary official statement. It's attached as Exhibit A to this resolution, and this is the document that's used to market the bonds. Even though this is a negotiated sale, you still need to have a preliminary official statement under securities laws for public debt. So I know she had some general points she wanted to make about the preliminary official statement, but what this resolution does is you adopt it and authorize it to use in connection with the sale, so I'll turn it over to the financial advisor.
Thank you, Mr. Carrasco. My comments will be brief, Mr. Carrasco's comments were pretty comprehensive. As far as the preliminary official statement, I'm not going to take you through the whole thing, I just have some general comments. If you have some specific items that you want to point to, feel free to interrupt. So by and large, this issue will be the same as the Series 2017 bonds that the district issued last year, so the preliminary official statement is modeled on last year's preliminary official statement, you shouldn't see too many changes. One change is that the district will not be reimbursing itself for any prior expenses, so that language will be removed. The largest difference in this issue is what Mr. Carrasco discussed with the change in delegated authority. So with the change in the law last year, it brought New Mexico in line with national guidelines for bond issues, and this just allows the district to have more flexibility, so when your pricing does not have to coincide with a public meeting of this governing body. So by delegating authority to a school official, you have greater flexibility and have access to more favorable terms in the market when determining your pricing date and marketing. So for example, under the old rules, if the date that you had selected to price and market your issue, something blew up in the market, you know, North Korea bombed us or something, you know, the markets went haywire, you wouldn't have had the flexibility to, you would have been stuck with the terms that the market dictated on that day, and that is no longer the case. So it gives you greater flexibility when accessing the market and gives the district access to better terms and pricing. So the district's request for qualifications for underwriter were responded favorably, we received a number of responses. The district opted to select Robert W. Baird to underwrite these bonds, they underwrote last year's bonds as well, they had the most favorable pricing and terms available, and so they were selected by the district to underwrite these bonds as well. The pricing looks very favorable at this point, you know, we talked about the 5% cap and the parameter limitations, we're looking at probably around 3.4% to 3.5% net interest cost. The coupons on there may vary, and there's probably going to be a little bit of premium, but all in, you're probably going to pay somewhere in the realm of 3.4% to 3.5%, allowing for a little bit of market movement. As these bonds were constructed, there will be no change to property taxes, so the district's debt service mill levy from 2017 will be the same for 2018 and going forward. So we will size the debt service to the current mill levy, so it will be constructed with a front-loaded debt and a declining debt service over the life of the loan, which has a couple of benefits. It would allow the district to retire debt more quickly in order to open up capacity sooner, so in the event that you need to raise more capital next year or the following year, you have that capacity open to you sooner. It also offers some amount of interest savings because the lower interest rates tend to happen on the shorter, or the shorter maturities or the front maturities of the loan. A couple of more points to touch on, this form of POS is still going through the process of revision now that the district has selected an underwriter. We are compiling bond council, underwriter council, our own comments and the district's comments, and we will probably have a revised preliminary official statement to be sent around sometime tomorrow. It won't differ substantially from what's in front of you, just, you know, some things like, you know, naming the underwriter and that sort of thing. And another, just another couple of items as far as timeline, we have a rating call set up with Moody's to evaluate the district's credit rating, and we expect that to go favorably, we don't expect any surprises. That is set up for the 29th, you'll probably see some presentation materials being distributed over the next week or so, and we'll be engaging in some discussion with Mrs. Millam and Mrs. McCain, and with yourself, Mr. Brown. So you'll see, just keep an eye out for those emails and those communications. The Moody's is expected to assign a AA2 rating, which is the state's enhanced rating, so the credit enhancement offered by PED will supersede the district's rating because we do not expect the district's rating to be that high, but we do expect it to be somewhere in line with last year's, we don't expect a downgrade. So that's pretty much all I have on that end, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Carrasco for additional comments, unless you have any questions.
And going back to Section 4, I'll just point your attention to that you're approving the use of the form, and you also delegate authority to the district officials to make any necessary changes in our discussions with the financial advisor and bond council and the purchaser, so it's okay that, that's the mechanism by which you authorize us to make any necessary changes. And while we're speaking of the preliminary official statement, and I don't mean to scare you by this, but I will refer you to my memo directed to you that should be included in your board packets, and this is what we call our Orange County memo, and it advises you as to your disclosure responsibilities under securities laws rules. And don't be alarmed, I know a lot of clients sort of freak out when they read all of the nasty things that can happen to you if the IRS doesn't like something that you've done or the Securities and Exchange Commission decides to prosecute you individually as board members, those are rare circumstances. And the purpose for me providing these descriptions to you is just so you can see some sort of examples of things that you will want to be mindful of when you're approving things like the preliminary official statement or the official statement, and what types of things the SEC and the IRS has taken issue with, and things that you need to be thinking about in terms of making your disclosure. Because while you're allowed to rely on the advice of professionals like your bond council and your financial advisor, ultimately, this is your document, and these are the representations you're making to the market on the district's behalf, so you do share some responsibility in that. And what it boils down to is that you need to review the preliminary official statement, as Ms. Diani described, there's still some time to make any necessary adjustments. If when you're reviewing that POS, anything comes to mind that you think is inaccurate or misleading, or that's not included but should be included to give a full picture of the district's financial standing, you just need to call myself or Ms. Diani or the designated officers, and we'll work with you to make the determination about whether that information is material enough to be included in some sort of additional disclosure or how to otherwise handle it. So again, if there's something that should be disclosed but hasn't been disclosed, please be sure to let us know, and if there are any facts that make the disclosures incomplete or misleading, we need to know about that also. So please read the memo, but don't get too worried about it, as long as we're having this open line of communication, we should be able to handle anything that comes up, but please review the POS and that memo in light of each other. All right, so I will skip over to Section, oh, and 14 also, once the sale terms are finalized, those will be migrated over into the official statement, and the preliminary official statement will become the official statement at that point, and you authorize us to do the same things with the POS as we are authorized to do with the POS. In Section 15, this describes the continuing disclosure undertaking and the final terms established by the designated officers. Under the securities laws, you have obligation to provide annual financial information filings 210 days after the closing of the fiscal year, so that's in the January timeframe. And as part of the issuance of this bond, you've agreed to provide certain disclosures as described in the CDU and in the Section 15, so I just call that to your attention to make you aware of that. Section 16 authorizes the president of the board, the vice president, the secretary, and the superintendent to make necessary changes to this resolution, to the form of the bonds, to the bond purchase agreement, to the final term certificate, and to the continuing disclosure undertaking. Similarly, Section 17 delegates to the president, the secretary, and the superintendent the authority to take all action necessary or appropriate to effectuate the provisions of this resolution, the final term certificate, the bond purchase agreement, the preliminary official statement, and the official statement. Section 18 are the district's covenants with relation to the bond, the promises that you're making to the bond purchaser and the market. And what you're saying essentially is that you will restrict the use of the bond proceeds to avoid making the bonds arbitrage bonds under Section 148 of the Internal Revenue Code, and that the president, the secretary, the superintendent, and officers of the district are to give certificates and reasonable expectations regarding the amount and use of all bond proceeds. Subsection B discusses that the district will take all action necessary for interest on the bonds to remain excluded from gross income tax for federal tax purposes, and not to take any action threatening the tax status of the bonds. As you're aware, there are permitted uses, there are reimbursement considerations that could all have a negative impact on the tax exempt status of the bonds. So I heard you discussing the possibility earlier of re-designating certain bond use proceeds to different projects. From what I could gather, it sounded like those were appropriate, but it would be prudent to engage with us in a discussion about whether re-appropriating bond proceeds might raise tax issues or other issues that may make the bonds arbitrage bonds, or threaten to, the IRS may threaten to make the interest on the bonds taxable, and that's not a good outcome, and we'll want to avoid any problems on that front. Section 19, or subsection C discusses the qualified tax exempt obligation status under Section 265B3 of the code. Section 19 states that the bonds are not to be issued until the attorney general gives approval as required by law. As you may recall, the attorney general has to sign off on all school bonds, and so we will engage in the similar process that we did last year. Interestingly, when I was at the attorney general's office, that was my responsibility, was signing off on all school bonds, so I'm very familiar with the staff there and their processes, so I don't anticipate any problem there. Section 20 discusses that the monies not immediately needed may be invested so long as not used in a way that makes them arbitrage bonds or adversely affects tax status. There are certain limitations on the interest rates and yields and all sorts of things that Ms. Diani can speak much better or more eloquently to than I can, but essentially there are restrictions on how you can invest and use the proceeds of investment under the tax code, so you'll want to be mindful and careful about that. Section 21 describes the pledge and obligation of the district under the resolutions to be discharged that when all principal and interest on bonds are no longer deemed outstanding. Basically, that says once you pay the bonds, you're no longer subject to these restrictions and obligations. Section 22 discusses that this resolution is irrepealable after bonds are issued and until bonds and interest have been fully paid, satisfied, discharged, and defees. So you can't take this resolution back once we sell the bonds and the bonds have been issued, in layman's terms. Section 23 describes the authority to issue bonds under this resolution expires after 120 days, I mangled that up. So one of the new requirements under the 2017 legislation is you can use this delegation authority, but it's only valid for a limited time, that period is 120 days. So for some reason, the bonds don't get issued within that time period, we'll have to come back to you and reengage in this process all over again, but we don't anticipate that being a problem. Section 24 describes the designated officer's certification, the final terms of the bonds comply with the parameters, and that's done through the final term certificate. So one of the new requirements under the 2017 legislation in connection with your use of this delegated authority is, yes, you can delegate that authority to your designated officers, but they have to provide you a certificate saying, "We sold the bonds, here are the final terms for the bonds," as proof that they've complied with the parameters that you set forth in this resolution. We anticipate having that for you at the next meeting, once the sales have occurred. It doesn't necessarily need to be at the very next meeting, there is some time allowed to get that in order, but we expect this is a fairly straightforward transaction, there shouldn't be many complications, so we anticipate being able to do that for you. Section 25 discusses the delivery of the bonds, that the delivery of the bonds is conditional upon the delivery of the tax certificate. So one of the opinions that my firm will issue is the opinion that these bonds are exempt from income for federal tax purposes, and we do that in the form of a tax certificate, and because these are tax exempt bonds, you're covenanting that you won't issue, the bonds won't be delivered until we've delivered that opinion to you, and you can rely on our representations that they're exempt from tax. Section 26 is your standard severability provision, if any paragraph provision of this resolution is deemed invalid, that doesn't affect the validity or effectiveness of any legal and proper sections of the resolution, you see that in almost all contractual language. Section 27 provides that no member of the district, or the board, or employee of the district has a direct or indirect financial interest in these bonds. And finally, well, not finally, Section 28 allows me, or directs me, to publish the notice that's listed in Section 28, letting the public know that you've adopted this resolution. And what that does is, once that notice is published, that gives anybody who might be opposed to the issuance of the bonds or aggrieved in some way by the issuance of the bonds, a period of 30 days to challenge it. Once that 30 days is up, if nobody has challenged it, they're barred from ever bringing a challenge against the bonds going forward. So should you approve this resolution this evening, tomorrow, I will send this over to the Silver City Daily Press, and they'll publish it, and we'll get the 30-day clock ticking. Section 29, we're almost there, this section describes that all prior resolutions inconsistent with this resolution are rescinded, annulled, and repealed, but only to the extent of such And Section 24 provides that this resolution will take effect immediately upon its adoption. So that gets us through the resolution. I mentioned Exhibit A, which is the preliminary official statement, which you're approving the form of and the use in connection with the sale. There's also an Exhibit B, which shows you what the final term certificate should contain, and a good idea of what the certificate that we'll be presenting to you next month, memorializing the final terms. And before I end, I just wanted to call your attention to the definition of the designated officers in Section 1, so that you'll know who are the people in power to make the calls on the final terms. So we have proposed a definition of designated officers means any two of the board president, the vice president, the secretary, the district superintendent, the associate superintendent, or the director of finance. So those two persons, any of those two persons working together will have the authority to make the final terms determinations. to make the final terms determinations. So with that, we've gotten through the resolution, I'm happy to stand for any questions that you may have.
First of all, thank you for sticking with us on this evening. It's been a long evening for everybody, so thank you for that. Questions from the board?
I have a question on the underwriters. Is that going to be naming the actual bond, or will we be...who the underwriters are?
Yes, so Robert W. Baird was selected as underwriter as the district determined that they had the most favorable terms and pricing, and we took a look at the proposal, and they did actually have the most favorable pricing, and then they had the added benefit of having worked with the district on the Series 2017 issue. So, you know, it just so happened that they underwrote your previous bonds as well, and so that should provide for a very smooth process and, you know, expedited delivery of the bonds. So, yes, Robert W. Baird will underwrite these bonds.
And that's what I was thinking, I just heard that an underwriter would be named, and I thought it was...
No, and, yes, and so that's probably what you read in the preliminary official statement. The form of preliminary official statement does not have the underwriter name, but the one that will be distributed revised tomorrow will have them named as underwriter.
Thank you for that clarity.
And the resolution also defines the purchasers as Robert, what you're...
Okay, thank you.
So you mentioned that there was a part in the preliminary official statement that says we're not going to reimburse the district. That's a change from last year?
Right, so last year, and maybe you can speak to this a little bit better, last year I believe there were expenses that needed to be...that had been fronted by the district, paid upfront, and needed to be reimbursed by bond proceeds, and in discussion with the associate superintendent and finance director, that does not appear to be the case this year, so that language was removed. This will be financing new projects and expenses going forward. Was there anything you wanted to...
I would just add to that 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 makes it a little more secure in terms of compliance with the Internal Revenue Code, because as I mentioned earlier, when you do have a situation where you're refunding...where you're reimbursing yourself for prior expenditures, there are certain limitations that could threaten the tax status, or have other adverse effects on the bonds. So that there is no need for reimbursement for prior expenditures here is, in our view, a good thing.
So are we using the bond proceeds that we still have from the last one to cover these expenditures?
Okay.
That was the question that I had, and thanks for asking, because I think last year we were in the position where we needed to get projects started over the summer break, we needed to have that capability to reimburse ourselves, so it's good to know. Other questions from the board?
The only other thing I would ask is if we approve this tonight, I'm a little uneasy with approving something that I haven't seen until tomorrow. I recognize there's going to be little change, but I would...I just would state that for the record.
Are we just approving the preliminary?
Right, no, what you're actually approving tonight is the intent resolution. So the PO...the form of preliminary official statement, the form is going to be the same, there are minor changes, but that's going to be fluid up until the...up until the POS gets actually posted and goes to pricing closes. So that's kind of going to be in flux until, you know, pricing is determined, there are a lot of fluid items in that, so that's kind of...that's going to change a number of times between now and when the bond issue closes. The real issue that you're approving here tonight is the intent resolution, so...
And as part of that intent resolution, you are giving us authority to use that POS, which is an important piece, and you can't proceed beyond this point really without authorizing the form, the use of the preliminary official statement.
So what I'm hearing you say is that we're going to approve the resolution, and the POS is part of the resolution?
The form of the POS, so the outline and the type of information, along with an ability to make the appropriate changes as the terms develop and the discussions with the underwriter proceed.
Okay, okay, I can live with that.
Other questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from administration, Mr. Brown, Mrs. McCain, Mrs. Mylum? No, sir.
This is just a point of detail, but after section twenty-nine, it says section twenty-four instead of section thirty.
I noticed that, too.
Yep, I can make that change, where was that?
After section twenty...
This should be thirty, you're right. I will make that before we get them executed. Thank you.
Very well, before the board is...for approval is item D, consideration, an approval of authorization and delegating the resolution, including the form of preliminary official statement for the Silver Consolidated Schools District Number One, General Obligation School, Building Bond Series 2018 in the amount of five million dollars. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion has been approved. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Very well, next on our agenda this evening is item E, consideration and approval of the New Mexico School Nutrition Cooperative Agreement. Who is presenting, anybody presenting that information?
Linda, I'm here with wanting to join the New Mexico Co-op with your consideration and approval. The New Mexico Co-op is a self...it's not self-contained, it has thirteen, fourteen school districts when I joined, it's a single-source co-op, and I attended three meetings so far, and they did it on a bid Friday, and LaBatt got it. And to me, the more people that are in the co-op, the better pricing we get. This year, I went around looking for co-ops because we just went down to two vendors for the Southwest Co-op. And a lot of items on this co-op is name brand products, Tyson, Dole, Heinz, and to me, bringing better product in the cafeteria is going to increase our participation in the co-op, even though we still have to follow guidelines and regulations. With your approval and consideration, I'd like to join the New Mexico Co-op.
Questions from the board?
I have a question. So you're currently a member of a small co-op?
At the New...at Southwest Co-op.
Okay, and so there was two or three?
There was just Silver and Lord'sburg left in it for this coming school year.
Okay.
So I did some searching, and they asked me back in the fall when I joined the New Mexico Co-op, and this year they went out for RFP, and I was up there Friday, and they did the bid, and LaBatt was awarded the bid.
Okay.
And there was...I was invited to a food show, which we got to sample and taste the food, that I know what I'm going to serve the kids, rather than just being surprised. This co-op has a lot of consistencies, and just the name brand alone, you know, is better product.
So do you see a price, maybe a pricing advantage?
There is, there were some items that are priced higher, but then again, now I'm ordering food, and some of these vendors don't have it, so I have to go to the second bidder, paying more for product that I don't even know what I'm getting, and it's going in the trash.
Well, thank you for trying to make our cafeteria food more delicious.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I was just curious, I know some of the food that goes out now is part of the co-op, I think, is prepackaged food, how much of that is going to be prepackaged?
It's still going to be a lot of it prepackaged, being we don't have enough labor, and all these guidelines and regulations that we have to follow, the menu is based...we have to base it and watch our saturated fat, calorie, and sodium. Our sodium level is at two percent, they might change it to one percent, and that's going to give us a cardiac diet.
What's the sugar look like?
The sugar, as long as we keep it within ten percent for the week, we're pretty good. So all our menus are doing through analysis and stuff, but it's back then, twenty-four years ago, I fed the kids. Now, it's kind of hard to feed the kids with whole brain.
Restrictions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
So I know the food is not liked by most of the students.
Right.
And we do throw a lot of the food away. What would be some examples of what your menu is going to look like with this new agreement?
Well, basically, our chicken nuggets will be Tyson instead of Cisco brand, Shamak brand. Just alone, the ranch is going to be Heinz instead of basic Americana. We're going to have Smucker's. We're still going to have to do chicken nuggets, which I have now, basically the same. I have done some commodities, which I'm going to move steak fingers, like you had told me, you and I have talked about.
Yes.
And I'm getting some orange chicken, I'm getting beef patties, you know, different items that can...that I can get heat within the budget. But basically, you know, the pizza, there has to be whole brain, low sodium, so that's why they're throwing it all in the trash, because it's not deep fried, it's not...
So does the high school have, like, vendors that go give lunch to the kids?
No.
Or like, you know, we went to Chaparral and other schools, and their cafeteria looks like a little food court that you see at the mall. Is that something that we're able to do?
If we have the money to do stuff like that, yeah.
But we don't.
But we don't.
I would just hope that the menus do increase the...maybe the appeal, the flavor, i.e., I would, I don't want to say challenge, but maybe ask each member of the board at any given time next year just to walk into a school and have a lunch, and realize this is what the kids are eating, and in my opinion, and it's no fault of your own, from what I've seen. We're not providing a healthy meal to encourage healthy learning, because some kids don't eat lunch, even though it's free. And I've always felt that if people can at least pay a little bit, it would increase our finances to make a better product, because I would gladly pay three or four dollars a meal, because I take my kids' lunch every day, and it's a burden. I give up my lunch hour to take my kids' lunch, and it costs me money, and I try to buy groceries and pre-make the lunches, but at the end of the day, I just want them to have a good lunch, and I try to stay away from fast food, and maybe Subway and chicken salads and stuff like that, but I would hope...
You offer a whole lot of...you have veggie bars, pre-made salads, it's kind of hard to feed something good that they want, because we have to follow these guidelines.
Exactly, and that's why I would ask that every member of the board sometime next year just go in there and form your own opinion with the lunches that we're serving the kids. Thank you.
I happen to go the beginning of the semester because I just went to go have lunch with my grade school boys, and it did sadden me, the amount of food that is thrown away. They didn't even open the packaged burrito, they just picked at their fruit, and a little pastry that they had. They mainly just drink their milk, which is the chocolate, but it did really sadden me, and I told the students around me at the table, "Why didn't they?" And they just said, "It's not good," or "It's cold," or I go, "Well, there's a microwave there, you know, let's go warm it up." But then, and it brings up another topic, they don't give us enough time to eat. So, you know, if there's something that's prepared that's going to be even warm to them, it might be appealing. So like you said, name brand, hopefully that can...
Name brand, and it still has to meet requirements, you know, it's still, it's not going to taste like Sonic, McDonald's, that they're used to having, because we just can't, this doesn't meet our requirements. But like I said, this bed does have a lot of name brand product, Smucker's, Tyson, Dole, and, you know, I'm doing the best I can trying to find food that they're eating. You know, I did send out a survey to elementaries what food they wanted to eat to let me know. A lot of them said pizza, chicken nuggets, and mashed potatoes and gravy, and I have that, you know, and we do, but I can't have pizza every day.
Ms. Torres, please let me know when you have steak fingers and mashed potatoes and gravy, I will be there, and I'll pay for it.
All right.
Thank you.
Please go under steak fingers, I...
Thank you.
And I'll say this agreement's for a year, so I mean, we can see how the year goes, see how much food is being wasted, how much are not being wasted, and make a decision then. So, yeah, thanks for looking for other options and opportunities.
Yes, thank you.
I would say also that I think it's been about two years, I used to go to lunch occasionally with my wife at the high school, and there was a nice salad bar at the cafeteria, but...
It didn't bring anybody in, it wasn't worth what we were paying to put it out when we were getting eight kids.
It brought me in occasionally.
I mean, it was that, that salad bar was really good.
It was very good, yes.
And we had eight kids eating it.
Really? Wow, that was a good salad bar. Well, thank you for the information, other questions, comments? Thank you. Thanks for sticking with us tonight. So we have individual item E, consideration and approval of the New Mexico School Nutrition Cooperative Agreement presented to us, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item E signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, so that motion passes. Thank you. Next on our item is item F, consideration and approval of closure and reorganization of Opportunity High School. And earlier in the evening in comments, I said that graduation was my probably favorite part of being a board member. This is probably the least favorite part of being a board member is having to make these decisions, but primarily based upon budget, and it's tough for myself, I'm sure it's tough for the rest of the board members and the staff, the faculty, the students. Again, we appreciate you all coming in and presenting to the board, sticking with us on this evening. There was a couple questions brought up through the comments that I'd like to ask Mr. Lamardo and Mr. Kokr, come on up, and just a couple questions that I had that were mentioned. One was the pregnant students, is there...in your discussions, was there any discussion regarding those students, and if this occurs, and the reorganization over at Silver High School addressing their needs?
Quite frankly, no, we really didn't discuss that. I mean, I understand Mr. Lamardo has the grads program over there, very familiar with that program, it's, you know, a program designed to help pregnant teen moms and, of course, ones that have already had babies and stuff. But again, it just goes back to what I said prior to, I mean, each individual kid that comes to Silver High, whether it be from Opportunity High School, or a kid that's already at Silver High School, we're going to address the needs as they come. Again, I'm not sure if the question is, are we looking at possibly having onsite daycare, nursery-type thing? Those are not the questions I can really answer, because that also depends on funding and obviously space availability, but if the need's there, I'll do everything I can to make sure those needs are met, so...
And just to clarify, too, and Mr. Kokr, if I didn't notice, we didn't have grads this last year, and so, but with the funding, as was mentioned earlier, there's going to be more funding, and it's a program that we can surely embrace again, so that is something that we go through.
And that was the other question I had, was would we be able to implement or continue that program with the reorganization over at Silver High? Mrs. Mylum, do you have a...
We would still continue, we meet with them constantly over the burning tree, and it's a partnership that we will still continue. We...there are no plans to take away that partnership. It's a vital part... It's a vital part of those kids, and they need to have that daycare, that daycare for their children. And, uh, so no, it is something that we will not even think about taking away.
Okay.
And in fact, the daycare is almost completely empty, and they're already working on dismantling different things.
The new building.
Building a whole new one.
Yeah, we're, we're moving forward, so they'll still be there.
And the, the other thing I'd, I'd mention is, in hearing all the comments from primarily students and alumni, and I'm a, I'm a Silver High grad, and it was really, uh, disheartening to hear many of them come up and say, well, I was bullied, or I was picked on, or I was, you know, Silver High wasn't a fit because of these particular reasons, and it was primarily because they were bullied, and it sounded like to, to me anyway. And I, I sure hated to hear that, and I would hope that, that, um, you know, maybe Silver High has changed them. Some of those are recent grads, some of them, uh, not so recent, but I would, I would hope the, uh, the kind of family atmosphere that was, uh, spoke too many times would be something that, uh, we could, in particular, if this reorganization, reorganization takes place, address with them to try and integrate them into, uh, S H S. And, uh, you know, address the, the bullying as a, as a whole, to the, uh, the school as a whole would be something that would be stronger than that.
And that's correct, sir. I mean, that's something that, you know, a, as a principal at Silver High, and I, my expectations of the staff is that we don't have any tolerance for bullying. And, uh, one of the things, or a couple of things that we're working on is some programs, student-led programs, to address bullying issues, kids that, um, seem to don't fit, um, making sure they're not, you know, obviously by themselves or anything else. So we're trying to bring back exactly what you were just mentioning about the family-oriented, uh, make it a student-oriented as well.
Thank you.
You bet.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I have a question. Um, the, what does the student, uh, the teacher-to-student ratio look like right now, and what would that look like with the, if there was a reorganization?
Are you talking specifically for O H S?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do you want to answer that one?
Um, I'm not sure how to answer that myself, as far as, like, per teacher, per students?
Mm-hmm. Like how many students per teacher?
Um...
In the classroom setting, on a daily basis?
On a daily basis, at the, at the high school, you're looking at anywhere between 25, 27 students per one teacher.
Right. So what would that look like if we, I mean, what does O H S look like right now, and what would that look like if we reorganized and relocated to Silver High?
Well, 31 seniors graduated. I mean, we had 63 kids, and if we had five teachers, um, I don't know the math on that, but...
It'd be about seven, seven to one, with 35 t, or students left over.
So are we looking to preserve that ratio?
Um, kind of.
Cause that sounds like problematic.
Maybe hopefully increase a little bit, but not much. We don't want to obviously increase those classrooms where they're not manageable anymore or anything like that, but I would say probably maximum 10 per one, so. And then we're also looking at S A, S H S teachers going in as well to help them, so it won't be just one teacher in there, it'll be teachers coming in and out, um, floating in, in, in that particular pod, just for the, like, our core classes. And then you have your elective classes that the, uh, students will be more than welcome to take.
And just speaking to the mental health aspect, so, part of it is the safety concern, or the feeling like you're in a safer place, smaller setting. Um, wha, I guess one of my concerns or questions would be, if we reorganize and relocate to the, to Silver High, is there going to be a separate entry point that's isolated for these students, which makes it feel a little, feel a little more secure? Are they going to have the same?
It'll primarily be the same, but we can talk at, or we could talk about, that goes back to the flexible scheduling, maybe not starting O H S at the same time the high school starts, maybe a little later, maybe a little earlier, or something like that. So if we're worried about the integration and a little bit too much stimuli, we could definitely, um, address that issue through scheduling, so...
And then the growing tree would remain at its current location with renovations, or as far as, again, as I understand.
It's going to be the same, same area.
Other questions or comments from the board?
My, my question and/or comment, um, with regards to Senator Morales's comments, um, have we discussed the restructuring as far as sixth grade back to La Plata, uh, K back to elementary schools? Has that option been looked at and, and maybe analyzed?
I can tell you it has not. The main reason why the, the decision was to make the move was, we were having sixth grade students leaving our district by the droves. And whenever they decided to go back to the elementary school, which was an administrate, administrators that were fully in support of this, uh, we have had some students leave, sixth grade students, but not nearly as many as, as happened in the past. Again, the sole purpose is try to figure out how we're going to keep students in the district, just to curb and the, the students that were leaving the district. And this was a strategy that was, um, used for that purpose.
Other questions or comments?
Well, I would just urge everyone to come to the, you know, let the kids have input. Tell, let, let them tell you what's going to make them feel safe. Use these two women's extreme, um, potential. Everyone needs to know how to balance a checkbook. Every teen mom, every teen mom needs to have support. Um, I feel like there is a lot of opportunity. Um, that's awesome that there's O H S kids graduating with associate's degrees. That's not happening at Silver High. We need that. We need that. The people that know what they're doing to come and help. You guys have amazing potential, amazing potential. And I would love for more kids to be able to have access to what you guys are offering to those kids at O H S. And I want the O H S kids to, I, I can vouch for the new administration. And I want you guys to go into Mr. Coker's office, and if he doesn't hear you, I want you to come here. And if he doesn't hear you, you come back here, because we care. And we hear you, and we are very, very thankful that you voiced your opinion. I was a teen mom, and I successfully stayed at Silver High School. There is a homebound program. There's a lot of things that you don't know are available at Silver High School until someone asks, or until you're put in that situation, and they will help you. And I'm sorry that we've had administration, all the way from the top to the bottom, that has not been there for you.
I think one of the things I'd like to make a comment to, thank you for your, for your comments, very heartfelt. Mr. Coker and I, I think there was kind of a, I'd like to kind of say as a cold war between the high school and O H S, and it was very, um, frigid for a while. Relations were all that, and, um, we, we had a previous relationship from then we worked together, and when I found out he was hired up here, we tried to capitalize on meeting with Mr. Coker before school started, and just building that relationship of how we could, um, just build, even before any of this was even established, or the financial crunch really, you know, came out. And, um, so, you know, we really tried to work hard. We have all the answers right now, but, you know, we're trying. And, uh, I think a lot of things too, the stop it with the bullying. Uh, I think next year, we can really push forward with that. Um, and push forward with a lot of things, and a lot of people are very honest with, you know, what is going on, so...
Thank you. Um, I would say whatever the decision is of the board, you'll have my support and, uh, whatever direction we go, and to make this as positive and as, uh, a better opportunity for all students as much as we can.
I just have a little something to comment, Mike. Um, I, it's just, to see the pride of the students just come and rally for their school is, is tremendously just awesome. Um, you know, if, if it passes where O H S does happen to go to the high school, you know, maybe Silver High School students could learn something from them. Cause I've, I've not seen a, a Silver High student do what these students have done. Um, I, I, I mimic what Ashley said, you know, I, I've had a, a daughter that's just had nothing but medical problems, and with a, uh, O H S student moving on over to the high school, he is an awesome key to listening to, to you, um, to your parents. Um, use him as an advocate to, to, to help you if nothing is not, if you're not being heard. And again, I want to thank you for everything you've done, Mr. Coker, on, on my behalf of my wife.
Very well. Other questions or comments?
Um, I think, uh, one of the questions that came up, uh, we're just discussing is, um, job situations for our current staff at O H S, what that looks like with the relocation versus staying put, is one question. Um, and I'll let you speak to that first.
Me?
Well...
Yeah, I don't think I control that.
Does anyone have a comment on that?
Mr. Brown?
The O H S staff, the current O H S staff, should the high school chew, should the, the vote go to relocating basically O H S to Silver High? The O H S staff are being, um, reassigned. There's, there's one that, that is not, uh, the contract not being renewed simply because of tenure, but the others, they will have a, a position in the district. Yes.
Um, and I guess the second thing that I would speak to, no matter what the decision of the board is, is that at some point, we have to really, um, be cautious about moving forward, but we also have to move forward in a timely fashion, because the thing that makes me most uneasy about the decision tonight is that we don't have a plan laid out for our kiddos as far as Opportunity, um, High School is concerned. So the one thing I would feel better about is if we had an outlying plan that said, well, this is what the reorganization looks like, this is what the alternative looks like versus staying put. And for me, that's a piece that's missing tonight, that is, I understand until things are motioned, but the order of it for me makes me a little bit uneasy. I, I mean, um, and I, I don't, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I, I would feel better if, you know, we had come in and said, well, this is what the reorganization would look like, now, now let's take a vote. That, that is something for me that I feel is, um, making me a little bit uneasy, because, um, clearly, we have, as a board, a fiscal responsibility to make the school district run, uh, and it's hard to do that, uh, with the deficit that we're looking at. Um, and when you look at the numbers, clearly, the one thing that we look at here in all those options that covers that deficit is the reorganization of O H S, when you look at those options. And no one wants to make that decision. That's not a popular move by anybody. No one here wants to see O H S closed by any means, um, or even reorganized. I mean, in a perfect world, we leave it the way it is, and everything would stay, you know, as is and moving forward, um, so that, that's clear to everybody. But I think the one thing for me that makes me uneasy, I see, I see the issue there, and I can understand the rationale behind it, but the thing that makes me uneasy is not having a clear plan moving forward, um, for what that's worth.
Other comments or questions?
I would just echo those comments, because there are a lot of unanswered questions. As far as a flexible schedule, are they going to start later? Uh, are they going to leave earlier? What entrance and exit are they going to use? Is there going to be a physical separation between that pod and the high school itself? And as far as I know, we don't have those answers here tonight. And, um, if we, if we did move forward to relocate it, I, I would hope that everybody understands that all the programs are still going to be alive and well. And the students are not going to be thrown to the wayside and say, we're going to forget about you. They're going to be welcomed with open arms at the high school. And, um, if we don't move forward, whatever the vote, the, the vote is, I would hope that we have answers to the questions about the reorganization, and be specific as far as who has a flexible schedule, why do they have a flexible schedule, where are they coming in, where are they parking at, what is the teacher-to-student ratio? Um, that's what I would like to find out.
Thank you. I, I would agree. I think, um, with the, the current situation, I understand, you know, there's, there is a lot of questions, you know. In some respects, yes, I think it would have been maybe more comfortable for the board if we had, you know, we're gonna, we've got Plan A, B, or C to reorganize into S H S. On the other hand, I see, well, there's been a lot of comments made, a lot of things brought up that need to be addressed, and so the, I guess the opportunity is there to take these comments and ideas and suggestions and build upon them. If the vote is to reorganize, um, there's a lot of, a lot of work to do in a, a short amount of time, but I believe it can be done if that's, if that's the decision. Very well, um, members of the board, we've got item F, um, consideration and approval of closure and reorganization of the Opportunity School. Before us, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
If we make a motion, there's more discussion.
You can make a motion, yep.
Motion.
Motion to...
Table?
Approve. Or mo... Dr. Diaz, what is your motion to?
Well, my motion is, in a formality, I'm trying, that's my question, is the tabling process.
Good, uh, that's, uh, uh, possibility, I guess, is the...
I'm, so, I would make a motion that we table this, and we can have a special meeting until there's a clear plan about what that alternative looks like.
So we have a, a motion to table. Do we have a second?
I second.
We've got a motion to table and a second to table, uh, discussion.
I, I think...
I, I, my biggest issue is, I'll be honest with you, I, I came in here feeling like reorganization is the answer financially, and, and I just have to say, we have a financial responsibility as an institution. We have to make this work. Um, and so that may ultimately be the answer. I mean, um, the part that's missing for me, I, I will just say, when it's all said and done, I'm not sold on leaving O H S as a separate entity, just because financially, I'm not sure that's feasible. The part that is lacking for me in the presentation tonight is, what does O H S look like in the reorganization? I mean, there, there's not even, for me, the thought about the teacher-to-student ratios, the thought about, you know, how we make this more accessible for O H S students and what their needs are. I mean, those are things we're brainstorming through tonight, but I don't feel like they've really been mulled over when we're looking at the reorganization process. Um, that's my concern. And I, I would be happy to come to a special meeting if we called something like that, because the other part is time is of the essence. When we talk about budget, we need to make our budget, there are things that have to be turned in, we have to meet deadlines, so I would be happy to come to a special meeting for that. But the reality is, if we're voting on something, we have to be making a decision between two things, and right now, it's, okay, there's closure with no plan for reorganization.
That, um, I think, I mean, certainly a possibility, and is that something that administration feels that, um, in a couple of weeks, we can have a special meeting to look at specific options maybe for the reorganization?
Michelle, what's that look like with the budget?
My budget's due Wednesday. No flexibility there from K.
Wednesday.
They signed it.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
And we have to have a balanced budget.
Now, the budget, well, the, the budget is, well, we're not approving, well, you're, the board's not approving a budget. The budget you're sending in... the board's not approving a budget. The budget you're sending in...
No, I have to have it to the public ed department by Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
They will review it, make any changes that, you know, or have them make changes that they see necessary. And then it'll come to you for final approval in the next board meeting in June.
In June?
Right. So, really, there's no room for tabling is the rea- the reality. There's a decision to be made.
It could be, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, but it could be submitted, well, I was thinking it could be submitted with that...
Negative.
Like it is with the, it's submitted with the reorganization.
I cannot submit an unbalanced board budget.
It has to be balanced.
So, basically, we have to vote to...
We, well, we have a table, um, a motion and a second to, to table the item.
We've got to vote again.
Um, we've got to vote on that, um, and then go from there.
And we can. We've got to vote, basically.
So, um, any further discussion on, on, uh, tabling the item?
I'll just throw this out there because it's the obvious, uh...
We can.
We can't table that, so we're going to have to vote to, all opposed. All opposed is what it needs to say.
Mm-hmm. The, the motion is to table the item at this point. So, um, all those, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of tabling Item F, the consideration and approval of closure and reorganization of the Opportunity School signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
So, the, the motion to table dies, and we're left again with Item F, consideration and approval of closure and reorganization of Opportunity School, if I understand my rules of order correctly.
Excuse me, but do you have any questions for us at all at this point or...
I guess the question would be, I guess the question would be, um, what would the timeline be to, um, put some plans in place for reorganization?
So, there is not, like, you guys are not, you're not set on whether it's going to be its own school within a school or if it's going to be, um, completely...
Integrated, or so to speak.
Yeah.
No, we were looking at more the school within a school model than we were to fully integrate because we realized that, again, it goes back to my statement, not all kids are pigeonholed into, you know, a cookie cutter type schedule and classes and everything, so...
So, would it be safe to say that we're going to be doing the same school at a different location?
That would be the safest thing to say.
Because when I look at the numbers, we needed to save about three hundred some-odd dollars, thousand. And the cost of OHS is four sixty-six, five fifty-one. So, we need to save. You know, we need to sa- we still have money that we can spend on an OHS program. And with observing, um, positions and still having these people all have their positions, I feel like we still have some money to work with to make it a school within a school where they can still be serviced the way that they need to be.
Right.
It's not going to be comfortable, as, as comfortable as the location that you guys are at right now. Um, and I'm sorry. I'm sorry that our population has declined so drastically that we have so many schools empty, so many classes empty at Silver High School where it becomes more financially feasible for us to house you at a location where we are already paying the electricity and the gas and those types of things. That's something that's out of our control, and we're sorry. But that's where we find ourselves.
And I'll, I'll just say again, you know, I think, you know, we, we, the drawing board, I guess, in a sense, is, is, is wide open. That does sound like maybe the best, maybe one of the, maybe a better option is a school within a school, but, um...
And just, I mean, let it be, let it be this, this, for a year. Try it out, see how it goes. Get the kids' input, teachers' input. Mr. Lamardo, you've been there for a long time. And let it be fluid, just like most things that we're working with, you know? It's going to be hard for the kids, and for that, we're sorry.
So, members of the board, we've got, uh, consideration and approval of closure, uh, and reorganization of the Opportunity School. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll throw the motion out because we are hand-tied. Um, I would make a motion for approval of the request with the stipulation that this look like a school within a school and work to closely mimic the current OHS.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion to approve, and we have a second. Any further discussion? I would, I would add maybe that that's, maybe that stipulation or that additional information, what that would look like, be prepared for the next, next meeting in some sort of draft form or, does that sound all right? Very well, any other discussion?
I just want to throw in, you, you see business closing here in town, which those employees, and, and whether or not they have co-op students and they didn't have an opportunity to close, to, to, to stay this time. Everybody has an opportunity which is just going to be redirected and so forth. But a- at least this is given a, an opportunity within an opportunity to, to at least give it a chance to, to, to budget and...
And I appreciate Mr. Lamardo reaching out to those individual students, and I would ask you to continue to do so to, to, to let them know this is a new opportunity. So, we've got a motion and a second to approve the, uh, closure and reorganization of Opportunity School. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, so that, uh, motion passes. Next on our agenda this evening is future meetings and proposed agenda items. Our next scheduled work session and regular board meeting is June eighteenth. Uh, the school law conference is June eighth and ninth in Albuquerque. If you're planning on attending, I think, uh, Mrs. Hernandez has asked to let her know, um, I won't be attending that, uh, conference. The following meeting is a leadership retreat in July thirteenth and fourteenth in Taos. And then the annual meeting is in December in Albuquerque, the seventh and eighth. Next on our agenda is open public comment. Uh, Ms. Hernandez, do you have any submissions?
I don't.
Very well. Uh, next on our agenda is executive session enclosed pursuant to ten-dash-fifteen-dash-one, H-two through H-nine, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight. H-two is limited personnel matters staffing. H-seven, attorney-client privileged litigation. And H-four-seven, meeting with a district attorney pertaining to pending litigation in which the district is a participant, specifically a special education, due process complaint, styled student versus Silver Consolidated Schools, DPH seventeen eighteen dash twenty, including possible settlement and discussion and possible action to authorize legal counsel and superintendent to proceed with legal strategy, including possible settlement as discussed in executive session in the matter styled student versus Silver Consolidated Schools, DPH seventeen eighteen dash twenty. Um, I will ask Mrs. Hernandez, I believe, is, we need a roll call to go into executive session.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz?
Yes.
And Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Very well, the time is ten oh-two.